Everybody have a seat who wants one. It's my pleasure to gavel to order the Mount Pleasant Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 10th. We are at Park West Gym. It is great to be here bringing government to you instead of you always coming to government. And I want to thank our staff and our police, everybody for all the good work they have done setting this up. Look at that fantastic display. And the AC is just working like a charm. Thank you. That is really great. It's, I don't know about y'all, but it's really cool over here. So we will begin item one on the agenda with a prayer by Chaplain Linda Emanuel followed by a pledge that will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Gary Santos. Please rise.
Good evening. We would like to thank the mayor and town council members for their dedication and the opportunity to serve the people of Mount Pleasant. God of justice, help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Compliance with Freedom of Information Act. Ask our legal counsel, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor, we're in compliance.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no. The ayes have it, the motion is passed. The agenda is approved. Item number five, Public Hearings, Awards, and Presentations. First is item A, Administration of Oath to Municipal Judges Staub, Hess, and Michael. If you'll please come forward.
Good evening. If those who are being sworn in would please place your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me the Town of Mount Pleasant Municipal Judge's oath. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of municipal judge for the Town of Mount Pleasant. And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge those duties and will preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary. I pledge in the discharge of my duties to treat all persons who enter the courtroom with civility, fairness, and respect. I pledge to listen courteously, sit impartially, act promptly, and rule after careful and considerate deliberation. I pledge to seek justice, and justice alone, so help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, good evening. The first two items or the next two items are recognitions of special athletes here in the community. And Mr. Santos, will you lead us in this?
Thank you, Eric. I love doing this. I love being able to recognize our youth for, in athletics and other things as well, but it's fun to have them come up. And tonight, we have the Special Olympics coming up tonight. And then these girls were fantastic the other week or two ago when we went up to Denver, a lot of them were, but they've had some other accomplishments that we want to talk about tonight. So if you'd like to come on up. The Mount Pleasant Recreation Department's Unified Sports Program provides year-round programming for youth and adults with and without disabilities. The town partners with Special Olympics in South Carolina to offer our athletes opportunities to compete locally, statewide, nationally, and even internationally. This year, four athletes, one unified partner, and one coach from Mount Pleasant were chosen to represent the state of South Carolina at the 2018 Special Olympics USA Games in Seattle, June 30th through July 7th. The first category is golf with Miss Chris Conant, Miss Ansley Pridemore as unified partner, and they won the bronze medal in golf. Soccer, we had Miss Anna Stone Cypher and Miss Katie Beck. They played as members of the Dorchester Dragons, winning silver medals in soccer. Next, we have swimming. And I'd like to point out that Miss Shelley Davis was selected as the head swimming coach for the team South Carolina, which included Miss Emily Jose. She won the 25 backstroke gold medal, the 50 freestyle silver medal, the 25 breathstroke participation ribbon, and the 4x100 freestyle relay fifth place ribbon. Y'all, let's give them a great hand, round of applause. At this time, we'd like to bring up the boys lacrosse team, the state championship The Oceanside Academy Boys Lacrosse Team captured a 2018 4A state championship title with playoff wins over Myrtle Beach, Bishop England, that was my alma mater there, Academic Magnet in Greenville in the championship game, wins over number one and number three current North Carolina state ranked teams, postseason recognition, Riley Saye Senior, All-American honors, and first team All-State. Justin Lively, Lively, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Lower State Player of the Year, defense first team All-State. Colin Wright Jr., first team All-State. Walker Rue, sophomore. Lower State Face Off Player of the Year, first team All-State. Cole Sweeney, sophomore, second team All-Lower State. And Riley Saye Senior recognized as the 2018 Mucho Nu's Best of Prep Lacrosse Player of the Year. Folks, let's give him a big hand. Oceanside Academy.
You all know Nicole Harvey, and she leads the town in many of our special events, including the Christmas parade and including this year's Blessing of the Fleet. And she's going to come up here and lead us in the presentation. I think we had just about 15,000 visitors for the Blessing of the Fleet this year. It was very, very successful. The weather helped too.
Thank you all for being here today. Thirty-one years ago, the Magwood family, who I'll call up now, Trussie Anne Jennifer, there's another Magwood here, but we're going to call her up in a minute. These ladies, 31 years ago, started this festival, came to the town and with some fellow Shem Creek fishermen and shrimpers and asked the town to start this festival with them so that we could thank the community that supports them and also raise money for local nonprofits. So Anne cooked all the shrimp and sold all the sodas and put these two to work when they were little ones. The festival is now a favorite award-winning community pastime, and it educates our community, it strives to educate our community and visitors about the importance of supporting local fishermen. And the season is now open, so I hope you're all enjoying some Shrem Creek fish and shrimp and all kinds of good stuff coming into our creek over there. This year, we had another record year, 17 Shem Creek boats were blessed in the boat parade. Each owner received $500 for a total of $8,500 in support of our shrimping and fishing fleet. We encourage you all to ask your local restaurants where their seafood comes from, so you can try to encourage, seafood should come from the sea, that's what I always say. And please, you know, if you find our local restaurants serving, especially if you find them serving local seafood, we ask that you go onto our Facebook page, post a picture, hashtag #JustAsk, and help us support getting that movement even further along. As this festival has grown, of course, so has the need for community support and involvement. We rely on the volunteers that partner with us and the nonprofits that partner with us to put on this festival, and their sweat equity goes a long way in earning them the checks that they're going to get today. This year's beneficiaries are East Cooper Community Outreach and the Wando Band Boosters. They helped us fill more than 100 volunteer shifts. I should also note that many town employees volunteer their time, and just about every department is represented on event day. To all of our volunteers, we're truly grateful. They were great to work with and were humbled by their generosity of time year in and year out. If I could call up now Echo Development and Marketing Director Alana Morrell and Executive Director Stephanie Kelly to join the Magwood ladies. And also the Wando Band Boosters President Jay Johnston, senior band student and drum major A.J. Johnston, senior band student and drum major Savannah Melichamp, who also is a Magwood girl. And Molly Lee, the Ways and Means and Fundraising Chair and Treasurer Cindy Phillips. Wando band is well represented. I'll tell you a little bit about these two groups. The East Cooper Community Outreach provides safety net services to our low-income neighbors while empowering them to create a better future for themselves, their families, and communities. Founded in the aftermath of Hurricane Hugo, Echo was formed as an emergency relief effort and has since grown into a permanent resource for families in financial distress, the elderly and disabled, the uninsured and the underserved, underinsured, and the unemployed and underemployed, single mothers and veterans. The organization serves families who are in both situational poverty and generational poverty. Echo's programs are designed to best fulfill the community's unmet needs while encouraging self-sufficiency, healthy living, and financial resilience. Thank you for that. Over the last 28 years, Echo has expanded its programs to adapt to the changing economic environment, especially in the areas of health and education. One of their overall goals is to provide low-income families with holistic wraparound services and support to help clients address the underlying causes that have contributed to their situations. The agency's impact has helped to enhance the social and economic growth of the Mount Pleasant community and continues to enhance the quality of life for its residents. Echo fills an otherwise unmet need for the local underserved population, providing necessary public services to thousands of struggling families every year. It's a lot. The Wando Band Boosters are, if you don't know who they are and you've not seen them, you should go see them, right? The Wando Band Boosters are the backup that provide all the support that the Wando Band needs. The boosters provide support to the directors of the award-winning bands of Wando and the students who participate in the band program at Wando High School. All fundraising for the bands of Wando is organized and conducted by the Wando Band Boosters, and 95% to 96% of the organization's fundraising efforts directly benefit the Wando High School band program, giving students in the program only access to excellence instruction in music, as well as the opportunity to hone lifelong skills such as perseverance, teamwork, and a commitment to excellence. Leadership skills that are learned in the band build students' confidence and help make them strong leaders in the Mount Pleasant community and beyond, and other facets of their life. We are proud to have these organizations serving and representing our town, and I thank you all for all of your efforts to help us put on this festival this year, which many have said was the best ever. We had a terrific event, very successful, and we're thrilled today to present them each with a check for more than $5,900 to help continue their missions.
we'd like to recognize, and we have two from the planning department tonight. Jeff, will you begin?
Yes, thank you, Eric. Lynette, would you join me here? Mayor and council, I have the privilege of introducing two folks from the planning department with a cumulative total of 50 years of service to the town, which is 100 times more than I've been here, so I've got a lot to learn. Lynette Lines is our executive office manager, and she joined the town on July 1, 1988. Starting as an administrative secretary, she worked in general government and the executive administration area, and then eventually came to the planning department in 2004, and she became the executive office manager in 2005. Lynette is thoroughly capable of handling all the aspects of our office activities and meeting our staff needs. She works on the budget, keeps us in line, oversees purchases and payments, coordinates with other departments for meeting arrangements, sets up new employees, she did one of those today, schedules hundreds of meetings and explains new computer systems and payroll processes over and over and over again until we get it, and she always does it with a smile and a laugh. She's in the know in terms of how to get things done and who to go to when questions arise, and she directs staff and the public to the right person or department to get things done. Over 20 years, Lynette's work has changed dramatically from when she started. For example, she now produces bookmarked minutes where interested folks can track and quickly find information, and she also produces our information on a town website. She links dozens of staff reports, application forms, and other materials to individual agenda items, and back in 1988, you weren't exactly doing that with an IBM typewriter. Speaking of minutes, Lynette prepared over 80 sets of minutes last year for meetings of the Planning Commission, the Plan Forum that's working on the comprehensive plan, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Planning Committee of Council. So she lives a double life. She attends the meetings, and then she gets to relive them again as she prepares the minutes. We couldn't operate and survive the day-to-day activities of the planning department without Lynette's expert assistance. We hope she stays for another 20 years. Thank you, Lynette. Kent started the same day as Lynette, July 1, 1988, and the town's population at that time was just under 30,000 people. I think we have that many houses in the Town of Mount Pleasant at this point. Many developments were not even a twinkle in some developer's eye, and many ordinances, which we now take for granted or sometimes criticize, hadn't even been written when he started. He began as a code enforcement officer, then progressed to planner two, senior planner, interim division chief, and then division chief in 2009. He oversees one of two divisions in the Planning and Development Department with a team of 10 other staff members that he supervises. In addition to that management responsibility, Kent serves a key role as the town zoning administrator. He has to make difficult decisions when applying, interpreting, and enforcing the town's extensive set of zoning rules and regulations. As you might expect, in that role, he's not always on everybody's Christmas card list. As a zoning administrator, his position is subject to a unique mechanism where people can second-guess his determinations through an appeal to the appointed Board of Zoning Appeals. Kent has successfully presented and defended his zoning interpretations and decisions dozens of times. Over his career, he's been heavily involved in many aspects of planning development, including hundreds of annexation requests and amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance. During his tenure, he has also seen, excuse me, preparation of several overhauls and updates to the town's long-range comprehensive plan. After three decades of work in the same jurisdiction, Kent has amassed a wealth of institutional knowledge, and he brings that experience when looking at issues. He's seen shifts in community sentiment, remembers every applicable state law which governs our work, remembers the history of hundreds of rezoning cases and development proposals, and can recite the results of dozens of court cases. He's forgotten the names of more property owners, citizens, and developers than most people will meet in a lifetime. So when a question comes up, the easy course of action in our office is, let's just go ask Kent. And more often than not, Kent's immediate response, in his well-known and sort of curmudgeonly way, says, "Well, what's the darn code say?" Kent, congratulations.
I have the honor tonight to recognize Jay Rhodes. Jay, can you join us up here? We're recognizing Jay. I joke around with him because I barely recognize him without his ball cap on, because it's unusual to see him without a ball cap. I think I've seen him maybe three or four times in the six years I've been here without, when he's not wearing a hat, so. Well, while we're recognizing Jay tonight for 20 years of service to the Town of Mount Pleasant, I wanted to say that he actually started working for the department 23 years ago as a part-time field supervisor. He was a guy out at the fields every night running the show, taking care of the parents, the coaches, and the players. He did a great job in his part-time role and was promoted to full-time recreation specialist 20 years ago in 1998, assisting primarily with football and track programs, but also managing field supervisors and scorekeepers for all of athletics. His attention to detail, knowledge, and skill in coordinating all aspects of his sports program led to his promotion as the football, track, and cross-country coordinator in 2007. Shortly afterwards, interest in lacrosse started to grow in the area, and Jay took on the new program from its very beginning and has developed it into one of our largest youth sports programs. In addition to his daily duties, Jay represents the Town of Mount Pleasant on the board for the Isle of Palms Connector Run. He is actively involved in professional organization meetings and participates in the South Carolina Athletics Program Branch. When he isn't working for the town, Jay helps his father in coaching the local Diamond Devils baseball team. The Recreation Department is very lucky to have someone of Jay's high caliber running our athletics programs. He is excellent in his job, and his sound judgment and insight are a benefit to the department and all that have the pleasure to work with him. Thank you, Jay, for 20-plus years of service, and congratulations. Many of you know Chip. He serves most of the time as the PIO for our police department, but Chip is being honored in front of you tonight for his actions that occurred on the morning of May 3rd, excuse me, of which he was traveling to work early, I might add, over the Ravenel Bridge, where he came across a stranded vehicle. And he pulled over, checked out what was going on, and soon noticed there was an individual who was in trouble. And the individual was at a bad point in life, attempting to take his own life, had already injured himself quite severely. Chip approached the man. The man at this time had one foot over the ledge, was trying to climb over the rails of the Ravenel Bridge, and it was just Chip, Chip and this gentleman. And after talking through it with him and offering help, letting him know he wasn't in trouble, he was just trying to get him help, speaking very calmly, very in control of the situation, and making the individual, under great distress, feel comfortable. He was successful at getting the individual to come back onto the land side of the bridge, where he was able to receive emergency medical treatment. And so for the extraordinary work done by Chip and for the great significance of what he achieved on that morning, he is being recognized as our employee of the month.
he achieved on that morning, he is being recognized as our Employee of the Month.
Just a second while we move the microphones. We could move on to item. Well, I guess we can't because you have to record it. Yes. The next item will be item six, approval of the minutes from the June 12, 2018 Town Council meeting and the June 2018 financial statement. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 12 council meeting and the June 2018 financial statement.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the June 12 Town Council meeting and the June 2018 financial statement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Item number seven, correspondence and public statements. Mr. Demora.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. We have several speakers. If I may, I will call you up two at a time, so I'll call two and the first one come forward, and then I'll name an additional person after that. Glenn Cowden and Roger Hopkins. Mr. Cowden, if you'd speak first.
Good evening, Lynette. I'd like to stand up here and avow my undying support and admiration for our Mayor Will Haney. I would stand with him for the rest of my life. The second thing is I had a couple of prayers going on, and one of them was answered this morning, when the remaining boys from the Wild Boar Team in Thailand were pulled out of their cave and they were first responders. The second prayer has yet to be achieved, and that is, you guys, you ladies and gentlemen on this council, it is my dream and my wish that you all come together, one voice, cohesively, and work with our mayor to protect the livability of our town. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Howard Yates, if you'd stand behind him, sir.
Hi. My name is Julian Hopkins, 1090 Marsh Court Lane in Mount Pleasant. I'd like to thank everybody for serving. I know the hours are good and the pay is better, so understand why you do it. Anyway, first off, I'd like to also echo Glenn's statement that I'm here to support Mayor Haney. I think we've got an unusually competent leader who's transparent, he cares about people, and I would hope that council gets behind him and helps him move the town forward. I'd also like to say something about something that's coming up later in the agenda, the Attorney General's letter and some of the items in it. And I think this is really important. This is important for our town. There are things in there that, you know, have to do with council and its, well, its agenda. So this is what folks go by. This is what we go by to see what's going to happen. When we feel like we've had the wool pulled over our eyes, that's no good. It's bad for everybody. It's bad for the town. Anyway, thank you. And again, Mayor Haney, you've got my support.
David Chimp?
No, go ahead, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Howard Yates. I represent John Cooper, who lives at 702 Nomad Lane. I met with you all last month to talk about the drainage problems on his street. Unfortunately, nothing has happened. I've asked, under the Freedom of Information Act, for a copy of the plans that are drawn. I was told first that they weren't ready, then that I couldn't get them. I have not received the plans yet. Mr. Cooper has called the Engineering Division several times and left messages. No one has responded. It seems as if he is adrift in a sea of indifference. And I spoke to Mr. Demora just a few minutes ago, and I'm hoping tomorrow that I'll be able to get a direction as to where the town of Mount Pleasant will go as to the two drainage movements that are not open that are right adjacent to his property. Thank you.
Lori Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor Haney and council members. Will, I too, like you a lot. I'd just like to say a few words about the proposal to have an outside council review the Atlantic project settlement. I believe the now discredited advice from the town attorney and his law firm and their role in the process to approve the settlement agreement require an independent review. I respectfully recommend three actions. One, since the town attorney and his law firm were the source of bad advice and guidance, it would be a conflict of interest for them to represent the town in the review of their own mistakes. The town attorney and his law firm should self-disqualify in this situation. If they don't, it would be a breach of any reasonable standard of propriety and professional ethics. Two, the original decision to disapprove the Atlantic proposal was made based on many considerations, such as adverse impact assessments and violation of the master plan for areas nearest the marsh. Public support for the original decision to disapprove the project was overwhelming. I encourage engaging an outside council to allow legal review by an attorney who was not a party to the bad advice and guidance that directly led to the wrongfully settled Atlantic agreement. Three, since Middle Street Partners has a direct interest in the outcome of an independent review, I assume the Councilman Santos will recuse himself. You are a newly constituted town council, a council elected to bring control to the runaway development that was supported by previous town councils. Please use your common sense and do the right thing for our town. Support an independent legal review of the Atlantic settlement process that was determined by the Attorney General to be improper. To do otherwise, in essence, supports a discredited process of the previous town council that you, as candidates, and we as voters, worked so hard to change. To do otherwise, removes any hope of changing the project now planned on our beautiful marsh that would rival the architectural atrocities of the boulevard and the Shem Creek parking garage. Thank you very much.
Michael Bauer.
Hi, my name is Lori Bauer, and thank you for hearing me today, councilwoman, men and women, and mayor. My name is Lori Bauer, and my property is located at 506 Live Oak Drive. I would like to ask City Council to see Shem Creek Overlay District neighborhood as a local and tourist destination and an ideal place for approving short-term rentals. The comprehensive plan of 2009 to 2019 states that the target strategy was or is expanded, is to expand water access to the town residents as well as the tourists. Shem Creek is ideal for pedestrian retail restaurants and lodging opportunities. Our short-term rental guests walk and create a lively, vibrant atmosphere. They use public transit, ride bikes and Uber once they arrive at this destination. Our guests create a minimal amount of traffic, and they are going to surely spend their money within blocks. This whole short-term rental situation is very confusing to a lot of us, and I just wanted to state for the record that I plan to move back into my house after my vacation this month, and that would be in August. And I have unlisted one of my short-term rental listings in order to do so, to attempt to comply as a bed and breakfast. I wanted to quickly tell you some money figures, and I wanted to tell you that I've paid over $6,000 in accommodation taxes this year. That would be $12,000 this year, should I continue. If there were twelve of us in the overlay district that were doing such as I am, which I'm sure they would be doing as well, or if not better than I, that would create $144,000 to the accommodations tax fund. And if just, if each guest only spent $200 per person in and around Shem Creek, which they surely are going to do because that's why they come there at that destination, that would be a revenue of $480,000 to the captive audience of the restaurants, shops and retail places.
Ms. Bauer.
And so anyways, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Bob Pickard.
Good evening. I'm Mike Bauer. I'm Lori's husband, and just wanted to reiterate a little bit what she said. We have created, she has actually created a wonderful short-term rental in the Marine District on 506 Live Oak. The reviews from the tenants that come and the guests that we have there are unbelievable. They stay in Shem Creek area. They, like she said, they Uber into town and they spend a lot of money there, and they love the experience. And to a person, everyone I've talked to says they would love to come back for that experience. Different from a hotel, different from a lot of other, you know, places they could have stayed in, it's affordable, and I think whatever is done and the council decides, we just hope that there's, it's fair and equitable, and it's something that we can have enough time to implement. If there's, you know, other restrictions and regulations that you decide, we would be happy to follow any and all of them, and just ask that you give us the time to do that. Thank you.
Walter Brown, Jr.
Robert Pickard, 572 Savannah Highway. I'm actually scheduled to speak for item 1A, New Business, but would like to take the time to thank members of Planning Committee and Council for working with me on that item, and I'll reserve my comments to that time.
Renee Stauffer.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm Walter G. Brown, Jr. I reside at 437 Vanning Street in the Old Village. I've been there fifty-three years. I've served on various commissions in this town in my fifty-three years and the eighty-five years that God has given me on this planet. Yesterday, I attended a meeting of the Old Village Historical Commission, and I was appalled at the attitude and the demeanor of the chairman of that commission. The protocol, as I understand it, for commissions, you open the meeting, you present the minutes, and you allow the citizens present two minutes to give their comments. That was not done yesterday. A Caucasian female was given two minutes, an Afro-American male, full of anachrym, who was born and bred in the Old Village of Mount Pleasant, was shut down. He was not allowed to speak. Following him was a Caucasian female that went over the two-minute limit, and she was allowed. Now, this is not the town that I've lived in and contributed to for fifty-three years. Mr. Mayor, I'm here just to voice my displeasure and let you and Town Council know what was displayed on yesterday. Thank you for your time, and I applaud all of you for your service.
Betty Royal.
My name is Renee Stauffer, and first I hope you take his comments to heart. I own the residential commercial property in the AB zoning district. I own the corner property of Live Oak and Simmons directly across from the bamboo restaurant, now Juju, and have the gigantic protected oak tree in my yard. I've lived here for thirty years and at this location since ninety-four. As this property, when I first moved in, was considered residential, commercial, and now it's being changed to the AB, which is just commercial. I'm respectfully asking that I am allowed to continue my short-term one-bedroom studio apartment rental as a bread and breakfast, to operate in the AB zone under this UCOD. I reside on the property. I accommodate required parking rules that is on, that is required, and I do not have any signs. I'm a few houses up from the boat landing on the Shem Creek Waterway Overlay District in Per Section 156.314. Field disqualified as a small-scale mixed-use scenario in line with what the town aims to achieve in that neighborhood. Some renters specifically choose my rental because they want to kayak a couple doors down the street and walk to the nearby restaurants. I respectfully ask that you take into consideration this unique situation of this rezoning, starting off as a residential zone, which is now being changed to AB, area business, commercial in the urban corridor overlay district. And please approve myself and the other short-term rentals on my block and allow for bread and breakfasts in that zone, especially since every single neighbor who I went to, and I have signatures from all of them, do not oppose this. In fact, some of them approve it as I send them business, which is vintage right up the street and, you know, the restaurants right across. And I've been dealing with the constant shaking and vibration of all this construction since, for the past six months, and, you know, please take that into consideration also while you're hopefully approving my request. Thank you for your time.
Robert Donaldson.
And for those who responded back to my letters, thank you too.
Well, I'm Betty Royal. I don't know what, but what I'm here for is, I live on Rudehamuckle in Mount Pleasant, and these people that have the bed and breakfasts, or whatever they're called, they are very encouraging to everything about the land and the sea in Mount Pleasant. And I have no objection to them having guests overnight. I live on Rudehamuckle. Do you want to hear that story? But anyway, it's a very wonderful place, and we have no objection to them having people come and stay overnight. Thank you.
Maddy Donaldson.
Good evening. My name is Robert Donaldson, and I live at 322 Lapwing Lane. I came tonight to ask the council to temporarily halt any enforcement of the outdated bed and breakfast ordinance that requires special exception approval through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Obviously, this is a very hot topic right now, and hopefully the town will have updated regulations that better reflect the true nature of short-term rentals. I look forward to these new regulations and I'm happy to pay whatever permitting, licensing, fees, taxes, or whatever the council decides. For me personally, having a few guests per month is just the equivalent of having a roommate. It helps pay the mortgage. This is income that I've budgeted for, and to lose that would cause a financial hardship. I would not have bought the house that I'm currently in without the expectation of short-term rental income. The folks who stay at Airbnbs are good people, excited to visit the town, and they put money into the local economy. As locals, they ask for recommendation, and we always promote Mount Pleasant businesses. In my experiences, Airbnb visitors are extremely courteous and considerate, and the Airbnb guest review system helps keep them accountable. My guests have caused no disruption in mine or other neighborhoods as they prefer to time, to spend their time out exploring the town. I've spoken to many people who have called the town for guidance on the short-term rental laws, and it seems they've received different or conflicting answers, since it appears going through the special exception process, and the Board of Zoning Appeals is a lengthy process, and the town is currently in the process of crafting new regulations for short-term rentals anyways, I ask that the town not impose any violations or fines on currently operating short-term rentals. Doing so would unnecessarily take away a very important revenue stream for myself and many others like me. Thanks.
Tony Geismann.
Hello. My name is Maddy Donaldson, and I live at 1649 Loudah Drive with my husband, Thomas Donaldson. I would like to express my opposition to any drastic or overreaching regulations on short-term rentals in the town of Mount Pleasant. I've seen that a driving factor for regulating short-term rentals is the concern over affordable housing. Please remember that Mount Pleasant was facing affordable housing problems long before Airbnb came on the scene, and we all know that even if the strictest regulations were placed on short-term rentals, housing costs would continue to rise simply because our town is such a desirable place to live. On the other hand, you can be certain that strict regulations on short-term rentals will have a counterproductive effect on many of your constituents by stripping them of a vital source of income. Many young residents, like my husband and I, depend on short-term rentals in order to be able to afford living in Mount Pleasant, the place where we grew up and have dreamed of raising our family. That being said, please know that we are willing to abide by fair and That being said, please know that we are willing to abide by fair and reasonable regulations, and we understand that this is a complicated issue. But in your deliberations, please consider that short-term rentals provide numerous benefits to the town and your constituents, and are very rarely the issue that the vocal minority might make them seem. Thank you for your time.
Barbara Geisman.
Tony Geisman. I live at Fairmont Ferry, lived there 38 years. I don't have an STU at present. As retirement circumstance near, I will want to get one in the future. I don't want to build one right now till all the legalities are sorted out. Several questions that came to my mind were, if I added on a wing to my house, put a kitchen and everything in it, would I be an ADU, or a B&amp;B, or what? And if I did build a standalone ADU, but then I decided to live in the ADU, could I short-term rent my house? What is a primary residence? Is a primary residence the one that I live in? And at the last meeting, I said that I live by an STR property, and would much rather have, I call them the happy vacationers, than the luck-of-the-draw, long-term renters. I've lived where I, I am, like I said, 38 years, I've had both kinds, and I much prefer the short-term renters. I pray that council doesn't impose some type of moratorium on building or other types of restrictions, be it lottery, or highest bidder, or area caps on STRs, that would prevent me at a later date from building. I don't want to rush out and get a building permit and a set of plans now to try and beat some perceived time clock on that. I don't think everyone in Mount Pleasant wants to be a landlord, and it's, some of the properties with existing STRs capabilities change hands, I think some of them will probably come off the market.
Frank Ankrum.
Thank you. Hey, everybody, I'm Barbara McClellan Geisman. I live at 1343 Fairmont Avenue in the old part of Mount Pleasant, which used to be the only part of Mount Pleasant, I think. And very quickly, I just want to say that I was born and raised here. My family, some of y'all are tired of hearing this probably, the Wildons on, from Bennett Street, the home's on Bennett Street, it's one of the founding families, so I'm related to everybody that's been here for a long time. And the Wildons also got the land grant from McClellanville, and I'm McClellan's, my maiden name. So suffice to say that I'm part of the old part of Mount Pleasant, like this gentleman here, and he will tell you what mucklewood means, but I'm not going to tell you, because it'd be great if you find out for yourself. And God bless you, and thank you for coming to town and speaking about that. That's very important, because the town is changing, as those who I've spoken to before know, this is not good at all, we're all about hospitality, love y'all. If I wave at you, do wave back. It doesn't mean I want to take your baby. I'm just saying, hey, how you doing? You know, seriously, y'all, this has been going on for years now, we really need to do something about it. My husband and I bought our home in 1980, and it's 960 square feet, y'all, and now we got two big old standard poodles. And it's a mess, but we're on .33 acres on a corner lot, huge lot, y'all, plenty of room for, in addition to the house, to nicely run out to these wonderful, seriously happy vacationers. I'm thrilled, my neighbor behind us has a short-term rental, y'all. When the people come, there's only one way that we know they're there. Some of them are in Ubers. We have to see the Uber pull up on the street, not in the yard, on the street, y'all, and they walk out to them. Or they quietly walk to and from their cars and leave, y'all. These are very hap-, they take pictures of our dogs, y'all, seriously. Y'all, they're wonderful people. Also, I want to say that we currently do not have a short-term rental, but we know we need one. You know, I have a business downtown that sells fair trade and USA handmade, no Chinese, so we're not getting rich. My husband cannot work like he used to. We're getting older, health reasons, et cetera, and he gets very cold, so we're going to have to leave after this due to health reasons. And so just don't block us because we don't have a short-term rental yet, y'all. And also, I was opposed to short-term rentals.
Ma'am, please.
Yes, sir. So I'd just like to ask you to investigate them thoroughly before you make a decision against them. Thank you.
Alicia Lockwood. No, no, sir, go ahead, you were next, sir.
Hello. Good afternoon to the board, to the mayor, to the audience. I have lived in Mount Pleasant all my life. Vietnam Vet, Agent Orange, poison water, I just had a kidney transplant three months ago. I was never so hurt yesterday at Town Council meeting. It's just like if I had brought my grandchild to say, this is how the board work. Let the occasion talk, and the black cannot talk. I mean, it's disrespectful.
May I interrupt? That wasn't a Town Council meeting.
Well, anyway, that was, well, anyway, well, it was the-
Just for the record, that was not a Town Council meeting, yes. And we do need your name and address for-
Yes, yes. That was yesterday evening, the historical-
Historic-
Old Village Historical Commission. Thank you. But you know, the reason why I'm here, I swallowed that. And the reason why I swallowed it is because it's just like going to a meeting, you want something to say, and end up back home with the same thing that you didn't say, because you didn't get the opportunity. And if you don't think that hurt, hurts, I know y'all have experienced that, it's very disrespectful to a black man. I have never said that before in public, but it's bang. Now, let me get to my point, the reason why I'm here. As you know, the night before St. Andrews Church was going to be, the construction was going to start, started, the church burned down. Well, you know, that's kind of unusual, but so it burned down, but God sees everything. My point is, I live on the adjacent lot to the church. Now, on this little sketch I got here, y'all probably can't see it, but anyway, what it is, when the easement goes down the property where the church is, this is the church, and this is the easement right here. The buffer is 15 foot for the occasion, the two occasions that live there, when it gets to the black persons, it's eight-foot buffer easement, and then you put a sidewalk there. When I come up my house, I have to look at the Shem Creek parking garage in my backyard. Now, if you don't think that hurt, excuse me. You see what I'm saying? I mean, let's be fair, sure, I may not be able to change the drawing of the church or whatever happened that night so they can do what they wanted to do, but I'm going to tell you one thing, it ain't fair for the two occasions to have 15-foot buffer and I get an eight-foot and a sidewalk, so I can just look at the brick wall? That's depreciating my property. And anyone of y'all occasions that have piece of property, y'all would actually fight for it. I'm being taken advantage of because all the other three people are black. It just ain't fair. Y'all ain't playing fair. It's wrong. And let me say another thing too before I sit down. You know, I get emotional because I'm a Vietnam Vet, been there twice, but you know, God sees everything, and I show hope that church was not deliberately, you know what, what.
Marie Racozy.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Alicia Lockwood, I reside at 316 Lapwing, and I'm here to address the short-term issue as well. It's been operating basically below the radar for years now, quite successfully. Charleston just completed its review and made some changes, but the reason that there hasn't been much known about it was because it didn't need any help. And I understand that Mount Pleasant is reviewing the regulations because of the volume now, and I think that's important, and I would hope that all those involved take sufficient time to first of all begin by understanding what is, because it has a system of checks and balances in place with public reviews that very readily eliminate those that don't belong in the system. And I think that the primary concerns that you're dealing with are owner, neighbor fear of something new and unknown, and that you have to carefully balance that with owner right to peaceful possession, and understand that all those owners are paying their taxes already, and are paying for the services that are being provided. I also find that, given the new uproar about what is, what has been, what's going to be, there's a lot of chaos, and it's very difficult for anyone to navigate through the system. And the information that people like myself are getting is wrong, and it's misleading, and it's problematic at this time, and I would like to request that you consider adding a moratorium on enforcement of any current rules, regulations of past or current until you determine what it is going to be, and then you can guide people through the process successfully. Otherwise, you might end up disenfranchising a lot of your constituents and creating a lot of problems for a lot of tourists that like to come here and enjoy the peacefulst city, or the friendliest city, sorry. Thank you.
Donald Wicks.
Good evening. My name is Mary Racozy. I live at 615 Baytree Court here in Mount Pleasant. I also have a home that's a short-term rental. I've been following this short-term rental issue very closely. I believe setting rules and regulations can be a good thing. I myself have strict regulations and rules for my guests, no parties, noise level at a minimum, and all cars must fit in the driveway. I have smoke detectors, fire extinguisher, and carbon monoxide detector. My rental is a large house, and it draws families that wish to vacation together in our beautiful coastal town. Staying together in a home rather than a hotel is what families prefer when planning a beach vacation. Not all families can afford the a la Palms, so Mount Pleasant is an affordable alternative. So in summary, whether a long-term or a short-term rental, it's a business. Limiting the number of days that a short-term rental business can operate may bring people into the market that are not serious about what is entailed in running a business. It's hard work and requires a commitment to excellence that not all are cut out for. I believe in controls to help those of us who are serious about running this business, this short-term rental business. Thank you.
Stephanie Zwebin.
Good evening, Mayor Haney, members of Town Council. My name is Donald Wicks, 1551 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. I'm here this evening regarding your agenda item, Committee Report's J2, that's the Attorney General's letter. I urge you to support the proposal to have an independent outside legal firm that has experience with local government activities, and has no connection with Mount Pleasant or any of the elected officials connected to this situation. This firm will provide opinion, should provide opinion and advice on the recent Attorney General letter concerning the murky conditions that preceded the decision on settling the dispute over the Atlantic development. Of particular importance to me is the question of personal liability of Town Council members, and the impact it may have had on the decision. I read in the minutes of a committee meeting that the town attorney feels that the council members were provided adequate advice. Yet, one member of the council recused himself over fear of personal liability. This question needs clarification. Also, the procedural process followed that evening regarding the executive session is questionable, and may have caused confusion in the minds of council members, and could possibly affect the validity of the ultimate decision made that evening. This question also needs clarification. The cost of an outside law firm should be of minor consideration to a wealthy town like Mount Pleasant. The major consideration of transparency in our Town Council is all important. Thank you.
Lucy Gordon.
Good morning, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Zwebin. I live at 3631 Spindrift Drive, and I'd like to raise the concern I have about several new commercial buildings that are being built around our city, that are very, very, very close to streets that in the future we may look to expand. I'd like to give two examples. The first example is the Home Depot that's going up at Highway 17 and Six Mile Drive, and if you've noticed, the supporting wall along Six Mile Drive is almost immediately on that street. It's just a two-lane road at this point. The other example I'd like to bring is the veterinarian building that's going up on Park Avenue, that is right against that street as well. Park Avenue, if you may remember, is two lanes in some areas and four lanes in others, it's not consistent. And what I'd like to raise about these examples is that certainly as we grow, the city is certainly on such a growth trajectory, we may need to widen either of those two roads, and we're allowing these new businesses to build the physical structure of their business so close to the roadway that we're boxing ourselves in, and we won't have an easy time of needing to widen those streets. So what I'd just like to bring up, even though I recognize that in those two instances, most likely that land was purchased quite some time ago, I would like to recommend that going forward, even for land that has been purchased, before we allow the actual construction to begin, that we really look at how closely the commercial building is going to be sited on the property, right next to streets that might at some point need to be widened. Thank you very much.
Paul Mount.
Hi, Lucy Gordon, 1551 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. I'm here to speak again also on the AG's letter about the events surrounding the settlement of the Atlantic property. The events leading up to and including the procedures in that particular council meeting were a painful low point in our recent history. They also have serious real-life consequences for many people, and they raise legitimate questions. We can't erase how it happened, however, we can certainly examine it to see if corrections can be made going forward. I want to commend all council members on their willingness to step up as opposed to around these questions, and to seek the answers to what was a bewildering series of events. Speaking for myself, I know that self-examination is never easy or fun, particularly around those issues where we most may need it. It is also best done in an atmosphere of support and mutual regard. Concerning the cost of such a legal opinion, running the government is expensive, and we realize that there is not a line item for clearing up mistakes because we don't expect them to happen. However, if and when they do, it does seem incumbent on us to try our best to do this. It becomes a cost of doing good business, and there is issue of public trust which is very hard to put a price on. We want to be frugal with the taxpayers' money, of course, however, given all the above and the bigger picture, it would seem within reason a money well-spent. We strongly support the council's initiative to enlist additional objective expert legal counsel in regard to the Attorney General's letter. Thank you.
Catherine Barnard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I too would like to speak about item 9J, the letter for the Attorney General. I was at the council meeting that precipitated all this, and the word fiasco does not even begin to cover it. The citizens deserve to know what happened at that meeting, and what can be done to prevent that, and the only way to do that is to identify the problem. We need an independent legal review to make sure we're getting unbiased advice. We need, we pay a lot for the legal services that we have, so let's make sure that we are getting what we pay for. Nobody should be concerned about getting a second opinion, and if the current legal counsel is concerned about that, that's a sign that you need new legal counsel. Thank you. that, that's a sign that you need new legal counsel. Thank you very much.
Lori Bixler.
Catherine Bernard, 1300 Hermit Crabway in Dunes West. I'd first like to thank you all for bringing your meeting to this neck of the woods. It's super convenient for us and we really appreciate that you did it. I'd also like to thank you for, and also your committees, for getting the minutes of meetings out a lot faster. For those of us that try to keep up, that's super, super helpful. And I'd also like to thank you for writing to the County of Charleston to take the widening of Dunes West Boulevard off the table as an alternative to widening Highway 41. The last item I'd like to address is the new Home Depot. I personally try to keep up with the different agendas, planning commission, planning committee, Town Council. I do the best that I can, and I do this because I believe that Mount Pleasant is in a growth stage that has to be very carefully managed. I also live in North Pleasant, in North Mount Pleasant, which is feeling a lot of this growth. This new Home Depot is such an eyesore. The request to build it the way it is should never have been approved. From what I've been able to read about the buffer requirements, it actually looks like Home Depot is in compliance with our regulations. However, common sense would tell us that the sheer magnitude of this building, it just doesn't go with anything else that's around it. Those in charge should have actually required greater buffers for a building of this size. And buffers all the way around, not just on a major thoroughfare like Highway 17. The new Lowe's is a good example of maybe what the Home Depot should probably have looked like as it's set back a lot further than Home Depot. So, I realize that a lot of you are not responsible for this mistake, but you can prevent it from happening again. When I look back at the minutes when this whole fiasco was approved, I wasn't there and I didn't comment, but I was also unaware. The crazy thing is that I'm actually looking at agendas. I read them every week and I do show up at meetings when there's a topic that I feel strongly about. I'm not sitting at home, completely unaware, yet I missed this, too. And the reason I tell you all of this is that there are a lot of people like me, and there are even more people who do not take the time to read all the different agendas about the goings-on around town. But this is where you come in.
Ma'am.
We've all elected you to watch out for our beautiful town, and this is your job. We're relying on you to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Is that my two minutes? Thank you.
Jean Jamming.
Lori Bixler, 144 Third Avenue. You know, I'd like to congratulate Kent Prowse on his Longevity's Award. Is he still here? You know, you were not on my Christmas card list. Kent and I actually, yes, we go back almost 10 years, Kent, in interpreting the zoning regulations to try to sort out 10 years ago what was a bed and breakfast and what was a short-term rental. And believe it or not, there was no such word in our vocabulary as short-term rental and no such word on the horizon as Airbnb. So, that's how long this topic has been alive. And that's about how long that George and I have been paying into accommodations and sales tax on our properties, which is well over $100,000 now that we've been paying in. And a lot of people, everybody in the council knows, but other people don't always know what accommodations tax goes to. And it's very specific, and I know this because I sit on our accommodations committee. And I know that everybody enjoyed the fireworks last week. We allocated from the accommodations tax $33,000 to Patriots Point to put on this wonderful fireworks show that we all enjoyed. I really want our council and our committees to take this into consideration, the bonuses and the plus that we give to the town. The reason I'm here speaking now is because we don't have a Citizens Advisory Commission for the decisions that are being made. I do wish to thank our councilmen and Chairperson Joe Buustis and the rest of the committee for their hard work. And I ask you to listen very hard because you're making such serious decisions that affects the financial well-being of your constituents. And that's scary because in the pocket, two minutes already? I'm not even a tenth through.
Quite a bit more, yes.
Okay, I just want you to pay attention to the statistics that are on the air DNA so that you interpret them correctly. And make sure that you don't misunderstand the tie-in between affordable housing and short-term rentals, of which there's almost none. And since I've run out my time, if you give us a Citizens Advisory Committee, I'd be glad to be on it and give you so much more of my thoughts. Thank you.
Jamie Yergin.
Hello, Mayor Haney and council members. My name is Jean Jamay. My property is 674 Ferry Street in Old Mount Pleasant. My husband and I have lived in this house for over 24 years and converted it to a legal whole-house rental last fall. Before going this route, we discussed our plans with our neighbors and none had objections. Some of them were here tonight and you heard them talk about, we're the ones that have, I guess, the happy vacationers that they were talking about that take the pictures of their poodles. We pay the 13% accommodations tax and we also have switched this property to our 6% non-owner-occupied property. So, we're paying, as y'all know, almost three times more in property tax now on this property than an owner-occupied house. We support creating a process for licensing, regulating, and for penalizing the industry, as Mr. Awark brought up at the Planning Commission meeting last week. We want to be a participant in this discussion and on how to do this. We manage our house ourselves and have a five-star record and strong screening process for our guests. My fear is if the business license fees and the cost to comply with the regulations are too cost prohibitive, then you will feed right into the hands of what you're trying to avoid, the large corporate groups buying up houses in neighborhoods to rent for short-term rentals. They will be the only ones that will be able to afford these fees. You will also lose the screening process and the basic intent of a vacation rental by owner or VRBO. Another fear is if you limit the number of days a property can be rented, then you encourage what I call the hobbyist, who is not skilled at screening or managing their guests. I think downtown Charleston has experienced this also. There is no consequence if that owner messes up or creates a black eye for the rest of us doing this as a business.
Ma'am, please.
We all have unique reasons why we're doing this. And we would, I support Lori in encouraging you to create a Citizens Committee to follow this. Thank you.
Dean Feltman. I called Jamie Yergin earlier. Ms. Yergin, are you here?
Sorry about that. I don't know if you called me before that or not. You didn't? Okay, great. Honorable Mayor Haney, distinguished council members, and my neighbors. My name is Dean Feltman. I live at 190 Fourth Avenue. Hey, Joe, how you doing? Good to see you. I typically see you at the airport a lot. Yeah, we got a lot of freedoms, don't we? So, I just want to share the success of short-term rentals. I've been doing it a very, very long time. And it's been very good. We started back about 10 years ago. And done correctly, that's all I encourage the members, is if it's done correctly, it works. Short-term rentals work in Mount Pleasant. Not only in Mount Pleasant, it works all over the country if done correctly. So, I ask you, as you go through this process of rules and regulations, is that you take in consideration that it does work and let's make the rules of how it works. Now, I have a whole house. I have a whole-house rental. I do not stay there when my guests are there. We typically have about 12 people. And those 12 people are typically grandfathers or parents, excuse me, you know, family members from the parents to the grandparents to the kids. And it's great. And during the daytime, they're never there. They're out visiting Mount Pleasant, Charleston, whatever, doing the plantations. And they come home at night. And that's the story of my thing. And you might know where my place is. It's right next to your public dock. And actually, that public dock has more activity than my short-term rental. So, I just encourage you to do the right thing. And I just want to thank Lori and George Bixler for doing such a great, great thing. And we pay a lot of taxes. We pay a lot, a lot of taxes. And since we've been doing this for 10 years, and we, first of all, we had it professionally managed, but now we manage it ourselves. So, I just want to thank you for your time and thank you for your service. And I enjoy being, having neighbors. And we all can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm informed that's all that signed up to speak this evening. Is there someone else? You may. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Diane Vincent. I live on 242 Sixth Avenue in Mount Pleasant. I have lived, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have lived in Mount Pleasant for 53 years. I love this little town. And I am here to also support the short-term rentals and to be able to rent out the ADUs. I built a home and an ADU specifically to rent out. That is part of our business plan. So, we built it for an income. And we started renting this house this January, and we haven't had nothing but wonderful renters. They are hardly there, like this gentleman just said. We see them in the evening sometimes. Or we might see them out during the day, but they're fabulous. They're just quiet. And they're very respectful. And I am more than happy to comply with any fees. We have the ADU listed as 6% assessment. And I just ask that you would continue to support the short-term rentals and anything that would have to do with the ADUs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else, that will conclude Item Number 7 on our agenda, which is correspondence and public statements. Moving on to Item Number 8 on the agenda, planning, Mr. Alma. May I ask, Council, can everyone hear okay? Everybody can hear okay? All right.
Good evening again. First order of business is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District. It would rezone about 15 acres of land consisting of 33 separate parcels and bring those into the Dunes West PD. You're familiar with the site. It was presented previously for a change that was altered, and now we're looking at a different request. The property is already under development. Phase 1 of the subdivision has a final plat and construction which is occurring, and Phase 2 has an approved preliminary plat. And some of the lots in the front of the subdivision are already contained within the Dunes West PD. Zooming in a little bit on the site, off Bessemer Road. The platted lots that you see on the right are part of Phase 1. And then the Phase 2, excuse me, I'm either driving slow or too fast. Which way? Stop. So, this is the location of the request. Again, the previous request was for modifying our R1 district and including it within the Dunes West PD. It was submitted as R3. And the basic gist of this, the intent of the zoning change, would be to reduce the setbacks for these lots in the subdivisions, but no increase in the total number of lots that would be allowed or change to the lot sizes, which are 10,000 square foot minimum already under the existing zoning. The intent would be to be able to utilize smaller setbacks on the properties, on these lots, in order to locate different homes and product types on these particular parcels of land. The proposed ordinance places some conditions on this request, including limitations on the lot coverage, no addition of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and no increase in density or additional subdivision of the lots that are either already platted or already approved. And then, in response to review by the Planning Committee last week, an additional condition has been submitted, which would require that the setbacks along the shared property line with the Arlington subdivision, which is to the north, would remain the same as already shown on the Phase 1 and Phase 2. Both the Planning Commission and the Planning Committee provided the full council no recommendation on which way to go with this particular request. And so, with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for questions and discussion.
All right. Thank you. We have an item here that has no recommendation from the committee, so it does not stand as a motion at this point unless someone moves in one direction or the other. The floor is open. Yes, Mrs. Lanning.
A number of us have either met with or spoken with or both, multiple times with the representatives from Crescent Homes, as well as people on the site, et cetera, et cetera. I drive by this spot every single day, multiple times to and from work. And I do think that this has gone around and around and around for so many months now and taken up quite a bit of time. And I actually don't think this is that complicated of a request. It appears to me that what really we're looking at here is these homes are going to be built. They're going to be built with the same number of lots. Probably all the houses will sell, and people will build their homes and live there. But what this does, if we rezone from the R1 to the R3 and allow it to come into the PD, is it actually uses up some of the allotment that's already available for the Dunes West Plan Development. It does not increase the number. In fact, it uses up some of what probably will never get to 100%, but it uses some of them up. And it also allows people to choose whether they want a bigger front yard or a bigger backyard. If you're building a home, you want to be able to set back your house in some cases because you want a big setback. Other people want, may have small children or a dog or something, they want a bigger backyard. So, that's really, from what I see, the main thing here. So, I would like to make a motion that we do pass this ordinance to amend the Dunes West PD District Ordinance by rezoning.
Just a motion to approve Item A1.
Okay, Item 1. Thank you.
Right. We have a motion to approve Item A1. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? And you, having made the motion, Ms. Lanning, unless you're finished, you do have the floor. You're done? Okay.
I already said a lot. Thank you.
I think I saw it. Did I see a hand? Mr. Brimmer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that we bounced around for the last few months. And it's not a terrible proposal. It's not going to ruin the neighborhood or anything. But there were some concerns that came up. And I think in the process of approving these developments, I think it's important that we do listen to the neighbors' concerns and we try to address those. And I do have to give kudos to the developer. We've had a lot of discussions back and forth, trying to address the concerns of the neighbors there in Park West and especially in Arlington neighborhood. So, just a couple of clarification questions, if I might, just to make sure that we've covered all the bases. Mr. Alma, I noticed that when this first came through, on the initial request, there were eight property owners involved in this, Crescent Homes being one, and then individual property owners. And they all had signed off on this first request. Did they all sign off on this modified request as well?
I'm not sure. I haven't gone back to look at the signatures.
I just want to make sure we're not proposing a rezoning of property where the property owners haven't agreed. So, I just want to make sure that's been done. Mr. Picard, could you?
If you'd come and identify yourself, please.
Robert Pickard, 572 Savannah Highway. And we did make sure that all of the homeowners, and since this has been a bit of a prolonged process, we've had some additional homeowners and we've got them to sign off as well, sir.
Great. So, if you would.
Yes, sir.
So, just to clarify then, to address the issues that have been raised, this request would have the requirements of you would not set the homes in Covington back any further on the lot than approved currently along the Arlington property line, correct?
Correct. Along the shared property line, we would keep that. Given the concerns of that community, we would keep that current, the approved setbacks in place.
Fantastic. And you're agreeing not to allow ADUs in the neighborhood as well?
Correct. By coming into the PD, that would negate any ability to put PDs or ADUs in. or ADUs in.
All right. And then one other thing, um, in the staff comments, um, and the planning commission, it talked about buildable area. And, um, even though the note said there was no change in coverage area, um, the numbers that were in the slideshow showed a difference from thirty-five percent to fifty percent. Um, so are you looking to change the coverage requirements of these lots as well?
No, no, per the application, the, the lot coverage would remain the same as well. So, none of that changes. That wasn't.
Well, um, to my colleagues on council, then, those were the concerns that I heard.
Can you speak a little more to the microphone?
Sure. Uh, those were all the concerns that I heard from the neighbors regarding this. Um, and it sounds like they've all been addressed, so thank you very much for working on that.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm happy to support this tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, mayor, um, just a, a quick question, uh, about the impervious surfaces. We couldn't really hear you down here very well, so you may have asked the question and I just didn't hear you. Um, it's, it's forty percent. Is that what it's going to be in this, um, development as well?
He has the exact percentage, but the, the currently approved, uh, lot coverage would not change than what's currently approved.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent.
Cover, coverage of the lot?
Yes, so there, there's no chance for a, a bigger home or anything like that. It's exact same number of units, same density and same lot coverage.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Mr. Cane.
Mr. Alma, can you tell me, how many homes are left in the original PD for Park West and Dunes West? Your ballpark is fine.
I don't remember that particular number. They're, they're divided up into different, the different lot sizes and types, R3.
Just your professional opinion. If we run out of land there, they're done, correct?
Yes.
So, adding land, does that set a precedent for somebody to add another fifty acres next month?
The boundaries of a zoning district could always change or you could add or subtract acreage from the zon, the area that's zoned. Um, so you could have another request to add additional property at some point to the area included within a PD. Um, this is, in this particular case, doesn't increase the number of units. Typically, when folks want to add, they will bring in property and bring in additional units in order to be covered by the PD. That's not happening here.
And in Park West and Dunes West, they have extras sitting there?
Yes.
Hundreds of them.
And probably, as was mentioned, many won't, won't be able to be utilized, just due to things like topography and drainage.
Right, well, will you consider this a precedent to, to allow someone else in the future or no?
No, again, I think it could be a, I don't know if, the town has experienced it before, but we as a staff would view it as a zone, as a zoning change in a zoning district.
Okay.
Are, is that it, Mr. Cane?
Yes, sir.
Are you asking to be recognized or? Eating a candy bar, I'm sorry. Um, I, if no one else has, I have a question for Mr. Brimmer. I, I couldn't hear what you were saying earlier. Were, were you saying that, um, that all of the, um, concerns that the neighbors has, have been addressed? But that is different from what came before committee, is that correct? At that time, though, were those addressed?
Not, not all of those conditions were agreed to at the committee. Then we've been doing work since the committee to get those conditions in place.
Okay, so, so the new conditions exist tonight that did not exist then. And, and Mr. Alma, we have, whatever the mechanism was, and I was trying, I was trying to hear, that those are not empty promises, those are enforceable. And in ter, the main one with me was the setback, was it went from, I forget what, down to fifteen feet, right?
Correct. In the rear, it stays at thirty.
So, now it stays at thirty.
And it is enforceable because it's a requirement of the zoning, the ordinance that would eventually be adopted if you approve it.
Got it. So, all of that has changed since the committee meeting, I understand. Right. Is there any more discussion on this? Are we prepared to vote?
Speaker, sir.
Oh, we have a speaker. All right, yes.
Mr. Picker, did you have any additional comments?
Okay.
Ellis Leesman? Okay. Mr. Donato, same?
Okay. So, councilor, are we ready to call a question? All right, all in favor of the motion to pass, uh, to approve, excuse me, item A1, uh, as made by Mrs. Lanning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, the motion is adopted.
First reading ordinance number one eight zero four seven and ordinance to amend the Dunes West PD Plan Development District Ordinance, ordinance R thirteen ninety as amended by rezoning approximately fourteen point five zero acre tract of land comprised of thirty-three parcels from R1, low-density residential district to PD Plan Development District and designated within the PD as DWR three, Dunes West R3. Parcels affected are located off Bessemer Road within the development known as Covington at Park West, identified by TMS numbers five eight three zero 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 three and five eight three zero three zero zero two five four through two eight one and five eight three zero three zero zero two eight six and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book L seventeen, page thirty-three.
This brings us to item number A2, Mr. Alma.
Thank you, mayor. This is another amendment, uh, to a, the, the Johnson Development PD, also known as Indigo Square. And this change would add, uh, a, a series of additional land uses to the PD that are not listed, uh, at this point. And I think I'm getting some assistance with moving the slides. Thank you.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Who was the second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, we have a second, so we are in discussion. Is there, uh, yes, and Mr. Cane?
Jeff, how, Jeff, how could it be that this wasn't included originally? I'm, I'm confused. They, they talk about, we're going to put apartments so people can walk to the businesses downstairs and all this type of live-work utopia we always hear about. How could it be that this wasn't included in that concept?
Oftentimes, when, when the uses are specified within a zoning district, um, in this particular case, the list was very specific. And when a, as they were working on rental or leasing spaces for tenants, uh, staff, as we reviewed it, said, "Your, your explicit list of uses does not include things like Pilates, uh, yoga, dance, et cetera." So, our recommendation was to make it clear, add it in as a explicit use and then we're covered.
I'd never live there, but thank you.
Anyone else? Are, are we, was there anyone here to speak to the? No speakers? All right, does anyone have any questions? Stuart? All right, are we prepared to vote? All in favor of the motion to approve item A2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one, one opposed, the motion passes eight to one. So, it is adopted.
First reading ordinance number one eight zero four eight and ordinance to amend the Johnson Development PD MUSU, ordinance number one four zero eight four is amended, also known as Indigo Square by adding workout studios, including dance, yoga bar, Pilates and the like, to the allowable uses in section three. PD land uses, programs and maximums A, land uses to a six point five eight acre parcel identified by TMS number five five eight zero 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 nine three three.
This brings us to item number A3, Mr. Alma.
This is a proposed text amendment regarding, um, political signs. And it consists of three different parts, uh, mayor and council. The first deals with definitions and makes, expands our definition of a sign to clearly cover political signs in addition to commercial signs. So, that's just a clarification to make sure it's, uh, included within our definitions. Part two, uh, deals with the, um, calculation, uh, of a sign area. So, it adds, specifies that a sign cannot be produced or cut, uh, into different sections in order to avoid meeting either a numerical limit or a size limit for a sign. And then the final section three, uh, clarifies and explicitly precludes signs from being within, uh, road, road rights of way. And it allows, uh, instead of the typical process of a series of notices and letters for enforcement, it allows immediate removal of any sign located within the right-of-way that violates, that would violate this particular section of the ordinance. And the Planning Commission recommended approval seven to zero and the Planning Committee recommended approval three to one.
Yes. Um, Mr. Cane, yes. We don't have a motion on the floor at this point, though, so.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to deny and we have a second. Uh, Mr. Cane, you have the floor.
I just think that using the right-of-way as, as an enforcement mechanism is very problematic. I actually asked our very able transportation director today if he knows what the right-of-ways are across the town. And he knew some general rules, but he didn't know all the right-of-ways. So, how is some, I hope to see, eighteen-year-old kid that wants to run for town council going to know what the right-of-ways are and where the boundaries are? I just don't think it's a very, um, fair or enforceable mechanism to use the right-of-way as the basis for, for the signage. I think the state law says if it's in the right-of-way and it blocks vision, that's a fair enforcement, because now you're talking about the usage of the road. The right-of-ways vary so much across the town from different areas that it's impossible to really have a fair enforcement of this. So, what does it lead to? I'm not saying anyone's doing anything unfair, but people start to think it's unfair. And when people start to think something is unfair, we shouldn't be doing it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
I, I initially recommended approval of this ordinance in the planning committee. Um, and I, I still support it in, in the first parts of adding the political signs to the definition and then, uh, amending the definition of signs for like cutting signs in half. Um, but thinking about the public right-of-way, um, I think that maybe something more limiting of saying thir, the thirty days or twenty to thirty days prior to the election, allow those political signs to be placed out there. So, we have such low voter turnout as it is, um, we want to encourage people to be engaged in the political process and especially for newcomers to the scene who don't have name recognition of an incumbent, giving them the opportunity to get their name out there in the public right-of-ways, I think, is a positive thing, maybe in the thirty days leading up to election. So, I would be in support of approving first reading and then amending it in between now and second reading, um, to say twenty to thirty days prior to an election to permit, um, political signs to be placed in right-of-ways.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Um, Joe, I think you were probably here back then, but this came up some time ago when we had a limit on when we could put political signs out. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, there was a candidate who was an attorney that was running and, um, was not amused and, uh, threatened to file a lawsuit against us. So, I, I thought they changed that thirty days. Do you remember that?
I, Gary, I don't think it was ever changed. You know, actually, most, during elections, most of the time, if anything is perceived to be in the right-of-way, it's removed and placed behind Town Hall. Like Sullivan's Island, I, I, I like, um, Ms. Whitley would, uh, prefer to have some timeframe where the signs could be put out and then taken up. I voted against this in the, uh, in the planning committee, but I, I think anything that will help people vote and understand there's election coming up is a good thing. And I, I think having signs around for a specific time is a small price to pay, as long as it doesn't block, you know, vision, uh, to, to encourage people to vote.
Well, I know the code enforcement officer removed a bunch of my signs because it was perceived to be in the right-of-way. So, I thought we already had a law for that as well, because I found a lot of them in the back of Town Hall. Um, so I thought we already had an ordinance about signs in the right-of-way, but I really would like, I think we need to investigate the fact, because it seems to me that we tackled this issue some years ago. And, uh, we were told that you couldn't put a time limit on when you put the signs out or not. I don't know, I'll defer to David, but this seemed like this was back in the, you know, um, late nineties or somewhere around there that that happened.
Mr. Paglari?
Mayor?
Just a second. Mr. Paglari, yes?
Right. I mean, there, there are limits. And I think, going back to your point, I think the concern that I have at this point is, that we'll have to work through, was, was that properly advertised? And part of the public hearing, if we're going to put a date, um, if that's under consideration or a time limit, that, that may be the appropriate way to go about this, if that's what council wishes to do.
Could you say that again, please? I missed that.
Sure. Um, Ms. Whitley mentioned a date or a time limitation. I think the concern is that if you were to approve first reading and deal with that, at second reading, it would not have been part of the advertised, uh, public hearing that was had at planning commission. So, we'd probably have to go through that process again. And your question, Mr. Santos, is?
My question was that I remembered some years ago, we had an attorney challenged us the, the time limit. It was, I think it was thirty days before you could put a sign out. And, and I, I thought she had won and, and that that was removed. And I just want to make sure before we make this decision, um, you know, that, that something previously that has not already been done to set that standard.
And that's part of, I think, the review process that we'd have to have, because one thing with signs that were limited is, is by content. We cannot discriminate by content. And therefore, if political signs are treated different than others, we have some problems. But I think the issue is, can we regulate that within the right-of-way as opposed to private property? And I think that's the issue that legal and staff would have to review, if this comes back around for a time limit.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lanning.
So, I have a couple of comments and then a question in regard to the actual motion that's on the floor. So, first of all, in terms of comments, uh, during the election, which was several of ours' first election, uh, one of the things we quickly learned is that at least in this end of town, almost every single housing area has a prohibition against signs in people's yards. So, they cannot put them on their own private property. Therefore, it was almost impossible to get the word out on this end of town unless you did put them, uh, if you got permission from businesses or if you put them in right-of-ways. I quickly learned they get swept up and I had to go to Six Mile to collect them. But, uh, didn't do it on purpose, but did find that out. So, if we were to follow with the vote and deny this motion, um, this, uh, ordinance, then what do we have now? And what can, I guess we go back to the drawing board and figure out what we need to do next for this thirty day? Because that sounds like a really sensible way to go.
Well, again, right, if, if the decision is or the question is about time limits, that is going to have to go through the, back through the process. And, and we can work on that. If you all would like to give us direction, assuming that this is denied, I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be, but if it is, we'd probably want to bring this back up at committee to talk about some options, um, and, and get into a deeper discussion.
Mr. O'Rourke?
I'm going to lose this one, but I'm going to say some things, um, just to make me feel better. The way I read this, it says, "The town has a sign ordinance for everyone except politicians." And I have a problem with that. I, I believe in consistency and fairness. Um, I, I feel like we should have to adhere to the same rules that we make everybody else adhere to all year. I've gotten all these emails and it's just, it's, but it's hard for me to read. And, and Kevin, I know you and I have talked about name recognition and things like that. And, you know, you ran in a runoff against a, a guy, a pretty nice guy, Mahoney, okay?
Great guy.
Who grew up in this town, has lived here for sixty years and had a darn billboard on Highway seventeen. And you beat him. And I don't think you won because of your sign strategy. I think you won because of what you stood for and what you believed in. And I think we should give the voting public a little bit of credit in doing research on who they're going to vote for and make a choice. But to say that the more signs we have in the right-of-ways are going to make people vote, I, I think that's a stretch, actually. So, I just feel good by saying that, but I, I, I'm all for consistency in, in how we do anything in the town. And I don't think we should be treated any different than anybody else out there. So, that's my two cents.
Mr. Cane?
Yes, I've, I've seen town, uh, signs from the police department, you know, lock your car doors and the sweep grass basket festivals coming up. And it seems like the town kind of does what they want already and the politicians are being lumped in as somehow wrong. And the real core of it, Tom, I recognize what you're saying and I appreciate your, your kind words, but what's the alternative? The alternative is we start to introduce money into the process, you know? People that are going to bring outside money to buy airtime on the radio and it just elevates, when you bring money into the process, it gets dirty. That's what happens at every level of government. It's not unique to here. And a sign, maybe you spray paint the sign yourself. You know, it's the cheapest grassroots way to, to get your name out there without introducing that potentially dirty money into the mix. So, I think that's a, kind of a counterpoint to what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is Jeff here? You don't know which way to look, right?
No, not here.
Just wanted to clarify.
I thought it was God for a minute.
Sounds like a joke.
Go ahead.
Sounds like a joke.
Don't let it go to your head.
I won't. Um, just wanted to clarify, there are prohibitions or limitations in other parts of the town code. What we're doing here is clarifying it, that the zoning code enforcement officer who enforces chapter one fifty-six, the zoning code, that it makes it explicit. Chapter One Fifty-Six, the zoning code, that it makes it explicit here as well, on that removal of signs. So removal was done in the past under another provision of the town code, this puts it under the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, I understand. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Whitely.
So the proper procedure here, if we wish to move forward with a time limit, would be to deny this ordinance at this point in time, and then would we need a motion to send it back to committee?
No, ma'am, it can just be put on any committee choice.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other, no more debate, we have no one here to sign up, the chair will speak for just a minute on this. I think we need something on this. When I ran for council in 2015, if the person with the biggest signs in the biggest places around town had won, that person would have been, would have been first place, and that person was near at the bottom. And so I don't think signs sway elections, especially in this day of social media and everything. That having been said, we need something. And it doesn't need to junk it up to where people say, "Oh, my God, they're all running again." But it needs to be something that's fair, that, as Tom said, that does not apply to everybody else but politicians. So I intend to vote in support of this motion to deny, but I think it needs to go back to committee so that we can bring it up and get it right. All right, are we prepared to call a question? All right, all in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The noes are, how many, one? Two.
Two?
Two. All right, so the motion to deny on item A three is adopted, and so the motion does not pass. That means you don't have to read it. All right, that moves us to item A four. Mr. Olma.
Next items deal with annexations. The first one is about a third of an acre of a land.
I'd like to move that we approve first reading of items four, five, six, seven, and eight, which are all annexations that the planning committee recommended approval of four to zero.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second to approve items A four, A five, A six, A seven, and A eight. And we have a second, so we're in discussion. Are there those here to address, anyone from the public here to address? All right, any discussion among council? All right, an aye vote is a motion to approve these, one, two, three, four.
Four through eight.
Five items, yes, four through eight, thank you. All in favor of the motion to approve these items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are adopted unanimously.
First reading ordinance number one eight zero five zero, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point two-nine acre tract of land located at twenty-one eighty-eight Gulf Drive, identified by TMS number five seven seven zero five zero 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 three, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook L, page seventy-three. First reading ordinance number one eight zero five one, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point one acre tract of land located at nine sixty Bullece Bay Boulevard, identified by TMS number six three two zero 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 one two eight, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook EG, page five twenty-two to five twenty-three. First reading ordinance number one eight zero five two, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point two-eight acre tract of land located at eleven fifty-nine Dingle Road, identified by TMS number five seven eight zero 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 four seven five, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook EL, page six thirty-nine to six forty. First reading ordinance number one eight zero five three, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point zero-two acre tract of land located at sixteen forty-seven Rifle Range Road, identified by TMS number five six zero 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 five three, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook EC, page seven thirty-six. First reading ordinance number one eight zero five four, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point zero-six acre tract of land located at forty-one sixty-two Tobacco Road, identified by TMS number six three two zero 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 one two four, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook EG, page one oh-nine to one thirteen.
Thank you. That moves us to item eight B, Old Business, item number one, please.
Thank you. This is the final reading of an ordinance to rezone property from R one, Low Density Residential, to OP, Office Professional District. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and the committee recommended approval four to zero. This property is...
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second, we're in discussion.
Mayor.
Mr. Caney, I believe. Yeah. Is there anyone here to address this? No. No public comment on this? Any discuss, yes, ma'am, Ms. Whitely.
I just need to recuse myself from this. As I stated before, my husband's employer owns this property.
Got it, so we have one recusal. Are we prepared to call this question?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to get a better idea of where that, where's that located.
It's adjacent to the Live to Play facility. Live to Play, the facility, the tennis facility, recreation.
Okay, that's right, I remember that.
Tennis, yeah.
Okay.
Tennis facility, all right. Any other discussion? Anyone wanna be recognized? All right, the motion is to approve item B one. All in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one no, and we have one recusal, so that would be a seven to one vote, and the motion is adopted. Yes.
Final reading ordinance number one eight zero four one, an ordinance to rezone from R one, Low Density Residential District, to OP, Office Professional District, in approximately one point one seven acre tract of land located at fifteen zero-three Mathis Ferry Road, identified by TMS number five five nine zero 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 seven two, and depicted as tract J one A in the Woodlands subdivision on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook L, page one fifty-three.
Item number two, please.
This is annexation, final reading, at two-one-seven-four Gulf Drive.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second.
I'm sorry, he was the first on that.
Second.
Mr. Bremer. All right, we have a motion to approve item B two. Anyone here to discuss it? Right, anyone wanna be recognized from the chair? All right, we'll call the question. All in favor of the motion to approve item two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted unanimously.
Final reading ordinance number one eight zero four two, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point two-nine acre tract of land located at twenty-one seventy-four Gulf Drive, identified by TMS number five seven seven zero five zero 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 six, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook L, page seventy-three.
Item number three, please.
Motion to approve, item number three, annexation.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any discussion? Anyone here from the public to speak to this? All right, we're ready to call the question. All in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I believe that's one no, Mr. Bremer. So by vote of eight to one, the motion is adopted.
Final reading ordinance number one eight zero four three, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately point two-five acre tract of land located at eleven fifty-two Graddock Road, identified by TMS number five five nine zero 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 seven, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in platbook AP, page one
Mr. Olma, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes item number eight on the agenda, which moves us to item number nine, Committee Reports. A is Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting, is there any business on that? I believe not. Bids and Purchases Committee, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, appreciated, Mr. Mayor. The committee unanimously approved the following recommendation, approval to contract with Utility Asset Management Incorporated, any amount of four hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cent, perform the pipe replacement in the North Point subdivision.
All right, that comes from the committee, it does not require a second, it is a recommendation. So we have a motion on the floor. What?
There's no.
There was no motion? Oh, I'm sorry, that was just a report.
It is.
Sir? I thought you were putting it to council for a vote, I'm sorry, I can't hear it down there. Thank you. All right, does that conclude your report? Does that conclude bids and purchases report?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Economic Development Committee Report, Mr. Bremer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item for tonight, we had an executive session to talk about incentive package, and that's on the agenda for later tonight, it's item eleven C one A, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Education Committee, no report. Finance Committee, Mr. O'Rourke.
We have one item that will be brought to you later in new business, it's the approval of an easement in support of the tennis complex at Whipple Row, we will be voting on that later. Also, one other item that we discussed was, there was a member from the CARDA board that came to talk about their budget, and our committee thought it was more appropriate to send that to the Transportation Committee in the August meeting so that they can make sure that the actual specifics of what's gonna be done in that budget is taken care of. And so that will come to the Finance Committee in August. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Fire Committee, Mr. Bremer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In Fire Committee this month, we had Amanda Knight, who is our emergency manager, present an update on training and events that occurred in May and June. We had Chief Mike Mixon of the Fire Department update the committee on an interagency agreement with the Alwindale Fire Department. He also reported on the annual report that's out, and all of you should have received a copy of that via email from Chief Mixon. And also, we provided, we were provided an update on the Fire Department's strategic planning process that they're currently engaged in. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Resources, Ms. Lanning.
Mr. Mayor, we had just one item that we handled in Human Resource Committee this month, and it was a personnel matter that had to be handled in executive session, and we will be addressing it in our executive session this evening, item eleven C two. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item H is Patriots Point Development Authority, that would be me, we did have a meeting, nothing of big importance at that meeting. What is coming up before the authority, either in the next meeting or the one in August, depending on when everything is ready, is the presentation of the master plan for the development of the ground lease that Bennett Hospitality has with Patriots Point Development Authority, and that will be coming up this summer, and of course, that eventually comes to the town of Mount Pleasant. That concludes that report. Planning Committee.
Yes, there are two, there are two things. First, by way of a report, there was a discussion of the exclusion of certain uses from the forty percent impervious surface lot coverage requirement in the old village. Mr. Owens had asked that, we discussed that, and we did, and based on our discussions, we have no recommendations for changes to the ordinance proposed, but we did discuss it. And we found that other materials could be used, that could be used to help mitigate the impervious surface by using some pervious materials. So if they wanted to rebuild a house to forty percent, there are ways to offset enlarging the house by reducing a driveway and different methods like that. So we have no, no recommendation. We also received a comprehensive plan update, and there was a discussion of accessory dwelling units and short-term rental properties. And based on everything, we went for about three hours, and we decided to have a special meeting, which we are gonna have on the sixteenth of September, to cover the follow-on topics that were going. So there will be a special meeting on the sixteenth of July. And then lastly, there was a recommendation to South Carolina Department of Transportation for the removal of twelve trees within the right-of-way of Mathis Ferry Road, and if you could bring that out.
I could give a summary. Mathis Ferry Road is designated as a state scenic highway, and removal of trees six inches and greater must be reviewed by a local governing body to provide a recommendation to South Carolina DOT before that work can happen. The work is roadway and intersection improvement project, it's required as part of the Southeast Spine Institute's new facility elsewhere on the property, so it's not adjacent to the Von Colnitz Mathis Ferry intersection, but the mitigation, the roadway improvement mitigation was required as part of the original approval of the larger development. The committee reviewed this in both June and July. There were some questions about options or alternatives, whether the road could be widened in a different direction in order to save additional trees. That information was presented at last, the last meeting, and while it doesn't affect as many trees, I believe it's ten instead of twelve, if you widen to the south side of the road, those trees are larger and more significant, so the impact would be greater. And all of this work occurs within the right-of-way, but there are concerns about the health of that buffer area outside the right-of-way on private property, particularly as it relates to a number of vines growing in there that are covering the existing trees in that location. And I believe, Mr. Bustos, the committee recommendation was to approve this particular request for tree removal, accept payment for mitigation to the tree bank, and then we would then look at a future date of trying to do some work with those adjoining property owners to clean up the area and/or replant along the site of the funeral home and the cemetery.
So in essence, they would, the mitigation for this would be that they would pay into the tree bank, and then we would go back and pay to have the area cleaned and trees replanted. These vines, as we all know, will kill a tree eventually, so we're gonna have to clean that out and plant new trees. But ultimately, the cost would be borne by the person doing the developing.
Is this an action item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Need to make a recommendation to the state.
Yeah, and because the local government has to recommend, the state and a scenic highway won't do anything until the local government says so, we recommended that we go ahead and tell the state that we agree with it, and we have a mitigation plan.
Okay, so is that in motion?
That's a motion.
From the committee?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, to approve the recommend, to recommend to South Carolina Department of Transportation the removal of twelve trees within the right-of-way of Mathis Ferry Road. Did I get that correct? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. I think we've seen enough tree removal, removal over the last couple of years, and I really think that they need to look at trying to find a way to do that rather than cut these trees down. Like I said, we've just been losing so many trees lately across from town center, some areas on Rifle Range Road, they're going fast, and I just hate to see us continue to cut down trees. I think we ought to try and find a way for them to make it work without having to take down the trees, so I'll be voting against this.
Mr. O'Rourke. But Gary, we're gonna put 'em back.
But twenty years, it'll be where they are now. We don't ever put 'em back the same size, it's gonna be planted and they'll have to grow.
Mr. O'Rourke, you have the floor.
I, I have nothing else to say.
Yes, Ms. Lanning.
I think in sensitivity to what our citizens have been through, for some of us, it was actually even a motivator for running for office when we saw some of the clear-cutting that was going on. I think at the very least, if we do vote for this because we feel it has to happen, we need to make sure it's extremely clear to the public why this was necessary, and if everybody's satisfied here tonight that that's gonna be possible, then so be it. But I would hate to think that we get another situation where people are just highly disappointed that we didn't think it through.
And I have a question, I don't know if it's of Mr. Paglioni or Mr. Olma, if council were to vote this down and say no, what, what happens?
That recommendation would go to the state, and DOT would take that into consideration. In effect, it's an advisory recommendation to state DOT.
So we, do we have the authority to say no to the cutting of the trees, but the road improvements are made anyway, or no?
They can't be made without removal of the trees.
They're required.
They're required, so the road improvements cannot be made without taking out the trees, is that correct?
Yeah, the other, do you have the photo of the other alignment? Jeff?
If we could back up a little bit.
The other option was to push it towards...
Towards the hospital and the parking lot to the south?
That's right.
And that would have affected fewer trees, ten instead of twelve, but the quality of the trees on that south side is more significant than what would be removed in the right-of-way in this location.
And do we know, what is the size of these trees? What's the, are any of these large grand oak trees on the scenic highway? What's the, are any of these large grand oak trees on the scenic highway?
No, I think the largest is a, on the north side, 13-inch sweet gum perhaps. Folks working with Southeast Spine are here.
Mr. Cramp?
Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Hi, thank you, sir. Ron Crump with Continuo Engineering, the engineering firm working on the Southeast Spine and the roadway improvements for SC DOT.
Okay. My question would be, are citizens going to drive down this road, and it's going to look like something that, that we saw last summer on another parcel, not to pick on anybody, but on Highway 17?
I would say absolutely not. The cutting here is very minimal, and the primary area that you see is right in that photo. There's an existing roadside ditch that's right now immediately adjacent to the roadway. When we widen this out, what SC DOT is required for safety reasons, they want to see turn lanes at that intersection. And to do that, we have to encroach into that ditch. It's going to become piped and have inlets along it so that we hopefully mitigate all the stormwater issues that are currently out there as well, because there's some standing water issues in that area. And in that process, the trees that are really being affected, you see it is, they're rather small stuff that's actually grown over with vines and already very, very poor condition and impacted pretty heavily in that. As we move the roadway slightly there to the north, and you see the water line getting moved as well with the storm line, that's where those roots are really getting impacted. And at that point, it's considered that it's going to kill the tree.
Okay.
I got one question.
Mr. Bustos, did you have your hand up for a second?
Yeah. We agonized over this one. The committee has talked about it, and we looked for almost any option we could not to do this. And I think once the roadwork begins, as gentlemen said, it's going to kill trees anyway. And I think to get the developer to pay into the tree bank fund, and then we go back and put the trees back in, was about the best option we could find.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bremer?
If I heard you correctly, you said that this roadwork was a requirement of the proposed development. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if the town were to say no, and the state were to say no to this plan, would that, in effect, stop the development from moving forward?
Transportation mitigation requirement. If they couldn't widen and meet that requirement, I assume.
Department of Impact Assessment approval.
So that's a yes?
Yes, it would stop the project.
I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, since this is only advisory, ultimately, the state makes the decision.
If they couldn't meet the requirement, if you couldn't widen the road and make these improvements, then you couldn't meet the Impact Assessment zoning approval for the overall project.
And is the, do you know if the requirement for the road improvements is based on projected traffic counts? I mean, it's the size of the, it's the size of the use there that's driving that, correct?
Yes. It triggered and went above the threshold.
So there could be other developments on that property that wouldn't meet that threshold, perhaps, that wouldn't require the road improvement?
I think something fairly small would kick it over regardless.
Okay. Sir?
Sir, if I may, real quick. So the Development of Regional Impact Study that was prepared for the entire East Cooper Medical Center, as they build out more medical office buildings, the MOBs, it was a threshold, and each threshold they reach, they're going to have to do more improvements. They stopped less than 1,000 square feet shy of that threshold, so any development anywhere on the entire East Cooper Medical Center would kick to this next. So essentially, I guess, saying no to these roadway improvements would cap the East Cooper Medical Center.
Where they are now.
Where they are.
And this parcel we're talking about, even though it's on the other side of the road, is part of that?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
We have a member who had to be excused. We can't vote out of sequence, and I don't want to vote without that member who is a member of the committee here. So we're kind of in a little bit of a quandary here for a second. We can take a five, I guess, a point of order. Can we take a five-minute break in the middle of a?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Are these trees going to be mitigated per caliper? I mean, the ones that you're taking out, is it going to be mitigated for the same caliper that we're removing? Are we replacing?
It's calculated in accordance with our code, with our ordinance. There's a certain number of inches that are required to be replaced.
Right, thank you.
We should have music playing in the background. All right. Any other discussion? I do have a question. If, if this does not pass tonight, does it come back again? Does it come back to council with another plan, fewer trees? I mean, we've worked on it, Mr. Bustos, several times, right? And it's changed. Is there any room to, to continue working to lessen? I mean, this is a scenic roadway, and I think our citizens have the impression that stuff like this doesn't happen on scenic roadway.
Mayor, mayor, can I, can I just say one thing?
Yes, Mr. O'Rourke.
We have talked about this a lot.
You have what?
We have talked about this a lot, and I understand Gary's comments too, but I just want to say one more thing. It looks really awful right now. And we're talking about a scenic highway. It looks like crap. And I'm sorry for saying that. But if we do nothing, those vines will eat away at every single tree there. I think we have a responsibility to protect what's there. And so doing nothing right now, I think, is bad. And if we all, we can call it a scenic highway, but from that one point to the end point, it's, it's not very scenic, quite frankly. So we've got to go in there and do something. And I think a part of this is, is clearing out those crazy vines, and if we have to cut the trees, we cut the trees. We put them back, like Jim said, according to the math that we've already established within the town. And then, you know, five years from now, it's like a million times better than it is today. That's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Cane.
Mr. Mayor, I would just think that, while I want to save the trees, I also think that this is our biggest employer in town. Maybe Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it's one of the biggest employers. And we have an aging population that are going to need the services of new offices there. Eventually, we're going to have to address the growth at East Cooper Medical Center, and this is going to have to get done. So I would support it, even though I don't, I'm not crazy about knocking trees down. I think it's a worthy project because of what it's for.
Well, I agree with Mrs. Lanning. If this passes tonight, I would like for the town to, to make a special effort, and I see you nodding out there, Lauren, to let the citizens know what is happening. Mr. O'Rourke, your point's well taken, that the trees that are there now might not be there in a year because of the way they look. And I think your point is very well taken, but I think people are going to get real upset when they see a group of trees being cut down or messed with on, on a scenic highway. All right. So we have a motion to, where are we here?
Mr. Mayor.
Approval to recommend?
South Carolina.
Yes, sir.
I just want to add one thing. You know, when you have a tree in your yard, you've got vines growing up, what do you do? You cut the vines. They die, the tree continues to grow. They don't have to choke the trees out. I mean, all they have to do is clean the vines off, and we, and we got the trees. So I keep hearing that the vines are going to kill the trees. That's not true. They don't have to. So.
All right. Mrs. Lanning?
I know we've gone back and forth on this one, but again, could we get clarification again, what hap, if it gets turned down tonight, doesn't this call, like, put a lot of things back, or is it just our recommendation?
It becomes a recommendation. So a vote to deny would be transmitted to the state DOT that said the Mount Pleasant Town Council recommends denial of removal of the trees. Remember again, a lot of, this work is occurring, you've got two aspects of it, within the right-of-way itself, and we're talking a lot about what might be happening on private property immediately adjacent to that. So their work is occurring within the road right-of-way.
I'll just, I'll just add one thought. I feel like Mr. Bustos' committee spent a lot of time on this, so, and they talked it out a lot. We talked it out a lot tonight, but I think they hashed this out pretty well.
All right, thank you. Any other comments before we call a question? All right. It is a motion to approve, the approval to recommend, South Carolina Department of Transportation the removal of 12 trees within the right-of-way of Mathis Ferry Road. All in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So we have eight in favor and one no. So the motion is adopted. Does that end the Planning Committee report?
Yes, that completes it.
All right. We will take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we will be at item J. Oh, there he is. He's in the room. All right. This brings us to Committee reports item J. Police Judicial and Legal Committee, so I as the chair will give this report. The first item is approval to require that municipal judges be subject to the same appointment process as the town council boards and commission appointments. Mrs. Whitley, would you please speak to this for the committee?
Sure. The current process for municipal judges' appointments has been a closed process, where the people currently in office simply write a letter and are approved. And I think that this was an attempt to move to more open application process, where there's opportunity for other attorneys in town to, to have a fair shot at applying for one of these positions as a municipal judge.
All right. So this, this comes from committee. Our practice is, we have a motion, and we do have a second, although Robert's rules here says when it comes from committee, it does not. I'm not trying to have any controversy tonight. But this did come as a recommendation from our committee by a vote. So if you'd like to make that motion?
Sure. I move that we approve to require municipal judges be subject to the same appointment process as town council boards and commission appointments.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Bustos? Yes. Mr. Santos?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, this is how we used to do it years ago. So I think we're just going back to the process that we used to use. It's, it's not a new process for the town.
Right. Anyone else? Is there anyone here from the public to speak to this? All right, we will call the question. All in favor of the motion to approve the requirement that municipal judges be subject to the same appointment process as town council boards and commissions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimous. Item number two, consideration to hire independent legal counsel to review and provide advice with regard to the Attorney General's letter to Mayor Haney dated June 28, 2018. I want to be very specific and very precise about this, this issue. As, as council members will know, much of what has gone on about this, and they have received recently, is attorney-client privileged information. I want to caution everyone, first of all, this is a motion from the committee that, a recommendation from the committee, simply to hire independent legal counsel to review and provide advice to this council about what this means and where we stand. It did not come from this committee for us tonight in open session to discuss the opinion, how we feel about the opinion, how we feel about council, how we feel about our lawyers. This is, everybody knows what the opinion says. Everybody has seen emails going around. We have received some from our attorneys that are labeled confidential, privileged attorney-client information. It would behoove us all to adhere to that and not divulge any of that publicly. Would like to remind everyone that the lawyers for Middle Street Partners, who were the case that that was involved with, have made a FOIA request. So for some reason, there is indication that they are concerned about this opinion or what may come of it, and that much of the advice that we received, or all of the advice we received in that case, remains privileged attorney-client information. We do not know what their reason for asking for that is, or if there could be possible legal action down the road. Third, one of the things that came out of our discussion of this is that privileged documents are necess, that are necessitated by the Attorney General Inquiry are associated with all of that. They are still privileged, as is what you received by email yesterday. We feel that the majority of the committee, and this was a three-one vote, that we need to establish an attorney-client relationship with a law firm who is in the business of giving legal advice, that what they give us would be privileged attorney-client information and not subject to freedom of information request. And that the information that we have, that we would share with them, that is pertinent to the case that prompted this whole thing, that was voted by this council twice, a previous council, and then this council, to seek the Attorney General's opinion, that all of that information that was privileged would stay privileged. If we go to something like the Municipal Association, they are not a law firm, they do not have a lawyer-client relationship with town council. And so the committee recommended by a three-to-one vote, consideration to hire independent legal counsel to review and provide advice with regard to the Attorney General's letter with my name on it to Mayor Haney, we all know it was on behalf of a unanimous vote of council, dated June 28, 2018. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
As a member of the committee?
Prove, yeah.
I make a motion that we direct staff to hire an independent counsel to review and provide advice with regard to the Attorney General's letter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Whitley. Yes, Mr. O'Rourke.
A couple of thoughts on the motion, on what we're doing. I have thought about this for a little while, imagine that. I think this action is about nine of us. I'm not so sure staff's involved. I'm not so sure our attorneys are involved in any of this. If we go on this path, and five of the nine feel like we need to do this, we need to agree upon who gets this question, which law firm we go to, but more importantly, what is the question that we're going to ask that's different than the other questions that we ask? Because when we get the information back this time, we have to figure out what our actions are. How are we going to act as a result of that? And you mentioned, Mayor, that we all sent a letter with your signature that nine of us wrote. That was hard. That didn't, I'm not so sure that worked, quite frankly. And because it's hard to get nine people to all write one letter when we all think differently. But you know what? We've got to suck it up as, as a nine-member board and agree to those two things that I said. Who gets that letter, and what are the specific questions? And if we can agree on that, you know, I'm okay with that. But if we just say, direct staff to go back and give, then we're all, at the, at the end of the day, we're all going to sit around here and say, why did we send it to them? Why did we send it to them?
Right.
So if it's nine of us looking for information, nine of us need to agree on those two things. And then I feel like it will be able to give us a conclusion at the end of this in which we could act. That's my two cents.
Well, I will say that I asked Mr. Demora if he felt that, one, there was a qualified law firm somewhere in the state that doesn't know us, doesn't know our attorneys, doesn't know anything about the politics of the underlying case, the politics after the case, nothing.
Did he say no?
They will look at this. I will let Mr. Demora, Mr. Demora ask. And to answer your first question, just as chair of the committee, what I would say is, if we wanted to find the question, we can say, we can, we can do that. But what I think, where we can start, and it may come back at some point, I don't know. But we can say, here is the inquiry that we all agreed on, that's got two questions in it. Here is the privileged attorney-client information that was involved in the necessity for that question. And then the AG's opinion is public, so everybody has that. That's, that's everywhere. I mean, I was notified by the media tonight on the way here that they have that. And we just asked them, what is our exposure? What, what is our exposure? I don't know, there might be 10 questions to ask, and I don't purport to know them, but I'd say, here's our situation, here's what we've got, what is our exposure? And if I can defer to Mr. Demora, if you would just say a little bit about what our conversation was, does such a firm exist? What would be the characteristics of such a firm?
Yes, sir. Well, I think...
Well, I think it's very important that the firm has some distance from Mount Pleasant. I think that they would have to acknowledge no relationships with members of council or relationships with anyone involved in the documentation that will be provided. And so we have used firms in the past that, where we've needed some independence and some distance from the organization. There are some out there who have that and who have also familiarity with how governments work and operate. And so if there was a positive vote tonight to move in that direction, then I would assume you'd be looking to me to seek out such a firm and see if we could retain one of them.
Yes, I believe we would. Yes, Mr. Owens.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My interest is, is what exactly are the parameters? Are we looking for a firm that has municipal experience? Eric, is that part of the scope that we're looking for, searching for?
I think that would be one characteristic, sir, yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Santos.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I was the one vote out of the three-to-one that voted against this. I base my information on information that we received from the Municipal Association and heretofore, my last 18 years, always gone to the Municipal Association for assistance and guidance on various matters, including lawsuits and things like that as well. So that's why I was very comfortable with that. Since that time, as you know, we've received information from 16 different attorneys from around the state that agreed with the Municipal Association's legislative, I would call him, he's an attorney, graduated Columbia Law School, and he's the one that goes in front of our legislature over issues. But 16 of them came in and agreed with him on that. So, you know, I understand that you want to have somebody look at it again. I would encourage us to, let's look at our, and use our Municipal Association that we're a member of, that we pay dues to, to get their opinion. And if you're not happy with that, then by all means, we can go outside. But since we're paying dues already and since they've offered their legal opinions on it, I would think that we would go to them and let's let them tell us what they think as well. Because then, like I said, if we don't like it, then we could go spend the money on another, you know, attorney. That's just my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Santos, I have copies of all of the answers in the emails that these other members of this listserv have given. None of them address the question of our liability, which was one of the questions that we put, which is public information. They are addressing what process is used to amend an agenda. And one of the biggest lingering questions we have is, when are we personally liable and what would that be? And I did see one in here that says they totally agree, and I have them right here, they totally agree with the conclusion in the AG's report about personal liability of council members and that our legislative immunity is absolute. The other is, I do want to mention, we passed with your leadership ordinance number 18009 that has to do with the role of lobbyists in attempts to influence votes of this council. And I also have a copy of the fact that Mr. Wells is a registered lobbyist in Columbia. And the minutes that we have from the debate on that from February 5, 2018, Mr. Paglioni says it applies to professional lobbyists. And so if we have received information from someone who is a registered lobbyist and we're thinking about turning them into our attorney, I think that goes in violation of our own ordinance that you led. And so his registered lobbyist status is available if you go on to the South Carolina Ethics Commission. The other thing is, anything that we have and that we have to turn over so that someone can completely advise us of what our exposure is, would be privileged attorney-client, privileged information. And I, for one, am not willing, nor am I able, to give that to people who do not have an attorney-client relationship with the town. So I don't even think that's an option in this case. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I would just ask that the items you just read from be added to the record so that people know what we're talking about. There was 16 lawyers from around the state that made an opinion about the FOIA portion of it. I think people should know what we're talking about when we're reading from it at the meeting. And I kind of agree that they have their agenda, it doesn't align with ours exactly. We may have commonality with the Municipal Association, but they are not the town. So even though they have things that they advocate for, that we agree with, they're representing the association, not necessarily us individually. And as far as the lobbying issue, I believe there was an exemption in that law for lobbyists that work for us. Could somebody clarify that, please?
I was reading you from the minutes and at that time, you were not yet a councilman and you had expressed concern that if someone came in and they were a lobbyist, that they needed to identify themselves as a lobbyist.
That's right. And there's also in that same ordinance, I'm almost 100% certain, an exemption for the ones that the town uses. It's not to prevent us from talking to our own lobbyists.
If we employ them.
Well, we employ them through our membership, is what I'm saying.
We don't have a lobbyist contract with Tiger Wells.
Well, we join the association that employs him. So in other words, if there's issues that we align with them, great, on other things we may not.
I'm just asking if we want to turn over our attorney-client privileged stuff to a registered lobbyist in the state of South Carolina, which he doesn't take us as clients anyway.
Are we looking to debate each other? I'm bringing up the two valid points. I just want those things added to the minutes. And I'd like...
Gladly.
...to find out if there is in fact an exemption in the lobbyist roles that allows us to talk to an association that we pay dues to every year.
Gladly. As to the question Mr. O'Rourke raised about what limit to put on that, Ms. Whitley, were you asking to be recognized? Would council like to put a limit on there that would be the amount of money that we would use for this inquiry with the caveat that if it approaches or goes over that, it comes back to council and we can say, okay, at this point, we're willing to spend more? I did receive from our staff, our financial staff, the budget for 2019 contractual services to Hinchey, Murray, Paglioni for contracted legal work is $463,860. Litigation fees for litigation work, that does not necessarily mean it's our retained council, it could be others, is $220,265. Expert fees to experts for litigation, $150,588. And legal other, which is mediators, transcribers, displays, anything that they might need to litigate a case, is $25,000. So this whole budget for this, and Mr. Moore, I don't know what you call it, but it says total legal. I know there's other legal, which is our personnel or cost to run our office, but that's $860,000. And given some of the citizens' comments tonight that this is about us, and I want to also say this, this is about us, this is about this council. This isn't about the AG, this isn't about attorneys, this is about us and our transparency and what we know going forward and what our exposure is. And if our budget is $860,000 for all of this, I mean, what's, you know, what's 2.5%, 3% of that? What's that figure? I can't put a figure on having the answer to this question, I can tell you that. But I am willing, as I think most of us are, to say, let's do this much and then if it goes over, let's bring it back to council for deliberation. Yes, sir, Mr. Kinnick.
I just also joined Mr. O'Rourke's comments about exactly how we worded, what are we looking for? I keep hearing the word exposure, which is great, we want to make sure we protect ourselves. But there also may be a potential for a sword here. You know, are they going to advise us on potential plaintiff actions on behalf of the town? So it's both. In my mind, I'd like to see both. This way, we come back to the people, because I don't represent the lawyers, I don't represent the politicians, I represent the people. So if we can come back with an answer for the people, I think we won here. Even though we didn't create this, this current council, we do the right thing by the people by getting this.
Mr. Demora, just for comparison's sake, a ballpark estimate to get started on something like this, I think recently we hired a law firm, and I couldn't even give you the name that handled that FOIA request of emails between councilmen and staff. I think we spent some money on that, I don't know how much. Are we looking at $10,000, $15,000, $25,000 upfront, do we know?
It's hard to tell, sir, but I would think that any type of work done by a firm with the amount of work that, in my mind, would must be undertaken to do a thorough review, I think you're looking at a cap of $25,000.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we start nickel-and-diming legal advice, important, essential legal advice. You can get a $25 answer, I'll bet, if we look hard enough. So I think we should, again, find the right group that's qualified to do this. You know, we certainly have to get their fee, but I would hate to make this like a bid thing or anything like that. And you're mentioning budget, budget, budget. We probably exceed our budget every year when it comes to legal advice, but we don't have a choice. It's not like we could say, oh, we're not going to defend that lawsuit because we're over our budget.
Right.
Legal is legal. Protecting the town is protecting the town. So I think a discussion about what it's going to cost, we want a good answer this time.
I thought you were the one who brought it up.
Well, I think we want a good answer and we want the last answer so we can do something. And that may cost us whatever it's going to cost us. But I don't see how, I don't see how it can cost that much for an opinion.
Why don't you put, why don't you place a contingency on $25,000? You know, in the event that there's negotiations, if it goes up, you know, that you make sure that it's covered in that particular contingency.
I mentioned cap, a cap, you give discretion up to a cap amount. Hopefully it will come in much lower than that. But that way, not every time there has to be more work done, it would have to come back to town council.
Right.
And wait another month for another meeting.
Right.
That would be a capped level.
A capped level, and you say $25,000?
So who is going to perform the questions, Mr. O'Rourke? The two questions that you raised?
I can answer that?
No, you don't. But are we going to get together as a group to solidify the questions that are essential in the process to eliminate any reservations or doubt in the future of the public?
Mr. Bustos.
For me, it is a matter of confidence. And right now, I have to tell you, my confidence is shaken. And it's, you know, I feel bad saying that, but my confidence is shaken. And I believe that we need to know without reservation that the advice that we're receiving is good advice, it's sound advice, and that we're going to do the best for our citizens based on that advice. And I don't, you know, I don't know that there has to be a lot of questions. I mean, just for an outside firm to look at this and say, the Attorney General is right or the Attorney General's wrong, you know, I don't know what he's going to say. I think, I feel I know what he's going to say. But I think this is going to be a tiebreaker and we need this so that we'll either have confidence going forward or we won't. And, you know, they don't have to be a litany of questions asked. I mean, they can look and compare two things. You know, and once that's done, they come back and give us a report, and then confidence will be restored or it won't. And if it's not, then we need to do whatever it takes to make certain that we're making good decisions. And, you know, it's, yeah, well, I just don't think we need to turn it into a long painful thing to get this, to give a package to the attorneys and say, take a look at this one, take a look at this one, and tell us. Because this is what we need to have confidence in our system.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I say one thing to respond to Joe's comment? I agree completely, but here's what I have heard, and I don't know if I heard it officially in a meeting or just wherever, but it appears that there is some disagreement among us nine, that the facts that went to the Attorney General, for the Attorney General to make the opinion, might have not been consistent with everybody on the council. Is that true? Or, I mean, there is...
We approved the letter. We unanimously approved the letter.
We did approve the letter, but let's say we approved the letter and the letter's facts were not factual.
We voted, what was sent is what we approved over two meetings.
Okay, I'm talking about truth, though. I'm not talking about what's in there. I'm talking about if, okay, then we screwed up. Okay, we screwed up, let's get it right this time. If the, if we're going to, if we think there's bad data, we're going to send bad data again to get another opinion on what the Attorney General said? Or should we fix up the data?
Mrs. Whitley, yes?
I think that...
Clean it up.
Give me some reason.
I think that it's very important that we hire an independent legal counsel to take a look at this. I think that there are key documents that we can provide, including the minutes of the meeting, which are not in question, along with a copy of the letter, a copy of the Attorney General's opinion, and even a copy of what Mr. Santos raised, which is these opinions of these 16 attorneys that have kind of come through this listserv. I think if we provide all that information to an independent legal counsel and just ask them to provide an assessment of the legality of what happened on that evening, in addition to an assessment of what our possible course of action is for the future, and to have all of that protected under attorney-client privilege is very important.
I agree, and if I may add to that, I was getting ready to propose an amendment to the motion that would include those things, would be that I would assume that any attorney, and when we retain this attorney, we will have attorney-client privilege, they would be, they would have access to all of our privileged documents, because they need to see that so they can assess where we are. But I think we're all saying the same thing. And that would be, they look at the AG opinion, which is what came out of the committee, they look at our inquiry, which is also public information, they look at our public, our privileged documents, and they advise us on our exposure and what possible courses of action would be. And, Mr. Kinnane, what you said, what, I forget the term you used, but what possible legal actions could be coming our way as well.
Both, right. What's coming at us and what we can do prospectively on our own to address this?
Yes.
These both need to be asked.
In the questions, one of the things that we asked, which was a clarification, was my addition, and it was, if the item is voted on at a later time, blah, 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 is the decision by council valid? And actually, I did not think, since the Attorney General is no longer attorney, it's not a client privilege, it's in public record, I actually think that it didn't answer that question. What it actually said was that there was the potential for council to have played musical chairs. That was the terminology that was used. And I bring this up because I said this to you one day as well in reading everything. I think that FOIA is not just about following the letter of the law, it's following the spirit of the law. And, you know, if something happened that confused everybody and created a situation where it didn't seem like the council was being transparent, then the question is, is it valid? So I don't really think the answer was there. So I think having an independent counsel to take a look and say, what do we do next with this information, would be very, would at this point be very helpful after all we've heard.
Okay, thank you. And this is a recommendation from committee, although there has been a motion and a second. I guess we need to offer as an amendment to the motion, the things we just listed, that it would, we've already mentioned the AG opinion, our inquiry letter, our privileged documents, ask what our exposure would be and what possible legal action we could be required or that we should prepare for. And I'm prepared to make that as an amendment to the motion if someone is interested in second. Yes, sir. Well, we don't have a motion yet, so hold on a second.
Well, I was just adding, include something GM had mentioned, including the information that we've got from the Municipal Association from these 16 attorneys.
Sure, sure.
I didn't hear you say that, I want to make sure that's included in it as well.
Okay, yeah, Municipal Association input. Okay, so that is an amendment that I'm offering as an amendment to the motion. I'll entertain, we have a second discussion, Mr. Brimmer. Mr. Brimmer. Did you get that?
I guess, I guess my first question is a legal question. So the privileged documents that we have between the town and the town's attorneys, does that privilege then extend? Can we take that information and share that with another attorney? That can be.
As long as council approves, that privilege would apply. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'm listening to the conversation, and I've sort of gone back and forth on this for several reasons. I guess I'm not entirely clear on what we're trying to accomplish here. We had concerns. We drafted a letter to the Attorney General's office and we got a legal opinion. There's concerns about that opinion, but it's an opinion like any other opinion. As I understand, what we're trying to do now is take the same information, give it to another attorney, get another legal opinion, which is an opinion like any other opinion, and which may support the AG's position or it may go against the AG's position. So now, we may have two different opinions. What do we do with that? Do we now go get a third opinion? I mean, where's, where's the end game here? What do we, what are we working toward by getting a second opinion? Ever since the November meeting of 2017, it has been reiterated time and time again that the point of these questions was for us to get guidance on future practice. Several of our speakers tonight either have the expectation or have the understanding that this process is about going back and invalidating the vote on the Atlantic project. If that's the case, let's say it out loud. Let's acknowledge that. If it's not the case, let's say that out loud and acknowledge it. But without that clarification, I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here, to be honest. I'd like to know what we're spending money on and what we're spending time on. So if somebody can enlighten me to that, that might be helpful.
Does anyone else care to be recognized? Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I agree with Bob. As you know, I, I had abstained from all the meetings over the Middle Street Partners issue, and so that was a very good question. I'm struggling the whole time here whether or not I should recuse myself or not, because I've been told once that it's tied to this and I've been told also that it's not, so I would like to really find out too, so that I know how I can vote.
I'm not, I'm not sure I under, I'm not sure I understand that. Mr. Paglioni, did, did we not receive a FOIA request from the attorneys for Middle Street Partners in relation to all of this?
We did.
Recently, since the AG's opinion?
Yes.
Okay. So, well, I'm, it's up to you, Mr. Santos. But Mr. Brimmer, as to your question, I, I don't think that, that we should be saying anything out loud about what we think we might do. That, I mean, that, that's giving our, our potential legal future out, out in, out in public, and that's why I think that's privileged attorney-client information. I mean, they may come back to us, and the AG was very clear about the parameters of their opinion. And, you know, a, a, a attorney that, that we retain could come back to us and say, you've got a real problem here or you don't have a real problem here. But the other thing that they can do is clear up, and I'm not going to go into privileged attorney-client communications, they can clear up the questions that many of us have that linger over a lot of that, that is addressed by the, by the AG, but, you know, the way they addressed it says, here's what state law says. If you're asking me what we're looking for, I want an attorney that sits down who's in my corner, and if you've ever been in a lawsuit, it's great when, when you have an attorney sitting down in your corner and they say, this is where you stand. This, this is, this is where you are in, in regards to personal or potential personal liability. That's, that's what I'm saying. And, and that needs to be privileged.
I, okay, so I, I thought we were going to get an independent attorney, though. Not somebody in our corner or not in our corner, but just...
No, no. But, but when you retain them, they, they, they have to act in your best interest. When you retain an attorney, they have to act in your best interest. And they could tell us things we don't want to hear.
Okay, well, let's...
That's what I'm saying.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just to try and answer some of what Bob's concerns were. The AG's opinion is their opinion of what a court could say about these issues. The next step is, we get somebody to tell us what we can do about it. And at some point, it's going to come back to us and we have to make a business decision. Is this something we could, we, we want to pursue? Do we have the will? Do we have the money? Do we have the time? Do we have the, everything? We make it, we got to make the call at the end. They're not going to come back and tell us, this is what you do. They're going to say, here's things you can do. Now make the decision.
Right. All right. We, we have a motion and a second for an amendment to the motion, so the first vote we'll have, unless anybody else has anything to add, will be to add those items about a twenty-five thousand dollar, let's call it a trigger. Trigger or cap? Cap?
Not to exceed.
Council actions.
What's that?
Not to exceed amount.
Not to exceed. And, and the items that were listed, the AG opinion, our inquiry letter, privileged documents, advise us on what our exposure is, and also any information that has been received through the Municipal Association. So are we ready to call the question on the amended motion? Yes, Mr. Owens?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify the end game that Bob was referring to. You're not seeking anything further than what we've discussed regarding a couple of questions for an independent council. There's not really a whole lot we can do, in my opinion, until we get that information from an independent council. So to say that we were, the end game was, you know, looking at the developer, the development, I don't think is accurate. Is that what you're telling, is that what you're saying? That we're not looking?
I'm saying, I don't know, I'm saying I don't know what they're going to say. That's what I'm saying.
Well, in this case with Mr. Santos, you know, he's, he had some issues in the past. I mean, none of that's being addressed tonight that I'm aware of. We're just talking about hiring an independent counsel to look into how we can best bring closure to the questions that remain. And that is that the town, this body in particular, needs to provide clarity on the, on that particular issue.
Yes.
With regard to, I guess, the November and then again, the July minutes. So to try to bring closure to that, we're not at this, we're not at this point saying that we're looking at any particular development or developer. Correct?
It, it hasn't, that, that was not in, in the motion that we are discussing.
Yeah, neither is it in the agenda.
It is, it is, right. It is for them to advise us with regard to the Attorney General's letter.
I just want to clarify that for my colleague, Mr. Santos.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And I do, I do appreciate that. But like I said, I think Bob brought up a good question, and he asked the question, he didn't get his answer, and that's what makes me a little bit nervous.
Okay. So we are prepared to vote. A motion, a yes vote is in favor of the amendment, which is a secondary motion. We've just, I just read it. All in favor of the secondary motion, which is this amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself because of the information that, that I didn't receive, so at this time, I'm going to recuse myself.
So, so note that there are eight aye votes and one abstention, so the amended motion passed, the amendment passes, which brings us to the main motion, which is consideration to hire the independent legal counsel with this added to it. That's the amended motion. All in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And once again, I'm recusing myself.
Okay, so we have one no vote, we have one recusal, so we have seven votes, so it's a six to one vote. All right. The motion is adopted. I don't see any need for executive session. That was item number three, unless anybody feels any need to discuss it in executive session. And, gosh, after all that, I can't remember if there was anything else in the report. If there is, I'll get, I'll get to it at another time.
Public services.
What's that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, Public Services Committee?
Yes, sir.
Item K.
Yeah, if you don't mind, the report, committee approved minutes of April 30th, 2018 meeting. There were two presentations given at Public Services Committee meeting. First was entitled, Update on Roll Cars Distribution, and it provided an update on the distribution of approximately eight thousand new roll carts throughout the town. The second presentation was titled, Update on Snee Farm Drainage Project, and it provided an overview of the Snee Farm Drainage Project funded through the State Revolving Fund. This project is set to begin this month and will take approximately two years to complete. Biggest concern were trees that were in the route of the storm drainage. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item L, Recreation Committee Report.
Mr. Mayor and council, the committee reviewed a 2016 presentation on artoturf, artificial turf fields. The committee requested that staff provide a brief on the scope of the Carolina Park Phase Three project and provide updated cost comparisons of construction costs for artificial and natural turf fields in the August committee meeting. And the committee also discussed the status of our neighborhood sports program, and I want to commend our recreation staff for doing such a great job of getting that information out to the public, and it looks like we have some people that are interested in it now. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Transportation Committee, there was no meeting, no report. Water Works Commission, do we have a report on that?
No.
No. No report. Water Supply Committee, no meeting, no report. That concludes that section of the agenda, which brings us to Section 10, Administrator's Report. Mr. Demora.
Thank you, Mayor. Just announcing the next, next month's town council meeting will in fact be back at the municipal complex in the council chambers, and also announcing three vacancies, two at large on the Commercial Design Review Board and one on the Planning Commission.
And I want to add to that, I spoke recently to the Association of Architects that meet in Mount Pleasant, and I implored them to please those that are residents to apply for these and take notice of these, and I had three takers. So I'm hoping we'll get some, some folks to apply for those. Thank you very much. Item 11, Council Business, New Business, First Reading of Ordinance Authorizing and Approving a Grant of Easement to South Carolina Electric and Gas on Whipple Road. Who takes over the details of this? Would that be you?
I can, sir, absolutely, if that's okay.
Sure.
This was mentioned earlier under Committee Reports, and it's a grant of easement that's necessary for the town to move forward with its projects at the tennis center on Whipple Road. It's a small type situation and really it slows the project if we don't grant it.
All right. Is there a...
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, second?
Tag it.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Is there anyone here to address this from the public? All right, we're ready to call a question. All in favor of the motion to approve item A1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, is adopted.
First reading ordinance number 18055, an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant of easement to South Carolina Electric and Gas Company and property known as the Whipple Road Tennis Center.
Item number two, adoption of, of a resolution authorizing a law enforcement mutual aid agreement between the town and Mount Pleasant, Police Department and the College of Charleston, Department of Public Safety.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Anyone here to address? All in favor of the motion to approve item A2, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it is adopted unanimously.
Resolution 18071.
Item three, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between Joint Base Charleston and the Mount Pleasant Police Department, Victim Advocate for Victim Assistance.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Yes, sir?
No, I was just...
Oh, okay. Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Any, any input from, anyone signed up to speak to that? All in favor of the motion to approve item three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18072.
Item number four, request from owner of Liberty Hill Development for amendment to develop agreement. I believe Mr. O'Rourke put this on the agenda. You have the floor, sir.
I did do that. Mr. Whiteside, I know you did sign up to speak on this item. Can you go to the podium? And Stuart, what I will ask for everyone's benefit is, do you have the authority to speak for Stefan Hoyer?
Yes, I do.
Okay. There is a request, and, and I'll, if it's okay, Stuart, I'll just try to simplify this. We have a request from Stefan Hoyer, who has, who had performed the development agreement for the Liberty Hill project, to merely start the project two years from the original date that he had on, on there. No change to the development agreement at all, no change to any particulars within the development agreement. The only thing we're going to do is move it out. In my opinion, with a town that is trying to catch up with rapid growth, it would help us, and it's okay that it would help Mr. Hoyer as well, that we approve this request and so that we can do a little bit more work in catching our infrastructure up and, and honor this request. Again, it will not change the development agreement at all, with the exception of the date.
Make a motion.
And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion by council?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Brimmer?
Yep. Stuart, can you provide a little bit more information for us on what the situation is and why the request is coming forward?
Probably the biggest issue is we've been dealing with the Department of Transportation for the last year. Everybody knows how, how it is to work with the DOT, and we're getting to the finish line, but it's just the latest getting started.
So as part of that development agreement, there was sort of a staggered build-out per year, a certain number of units per year. So you're just basically looking for a two-year extension of...
Right, just to push it out so we're not building all those houses in a shorter period of time.
So you wouldn't be starting the building of the homes for two years at this point or another year?
Probably another year.
Another year? Because it was supposed to be this year, right? For building permits?
Mm-hmm.
And no, no other changes?
No other changes, just a date.
So Stuart, if I understand this correctly, this, this will help us in a sense, it will slow growth, because instead of it all happening, and I believe it was, somebody remember the number of units, eighty, seventy, something, I forget what it was. So instead of those coming all at once, they will be spread out over more years than were originally approved. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there, Mr. O'Rourke, is there a downside to that for us?
I see no downside, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any, were you the only one here to sign, sign up to speak?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion from council? Are we prepared to call the question? All in favor of the motion to adopt, no, I'm sorry. What was yours? To approve the extension of the, the years? Help me, reporter, what was the actual, I, I've forgotten the wording of the motion. It must be correct.
Yes, to, to push, push it back two years.
Two years, okay. Push it back two years. All in favor of the motion to approve? Yes, sir?
If I may just ask one other question?
Yes.
We haven't heard from our staff, our planning staff. I would just like to ask planning staff whether they have any comments on this request or concerns.
We haven't reviewed it, other than seeing it come up on the agenda this evening, so we haven't expressed any particular concerns about it. And again, it does meet objectives that the council's been talking about.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1743.28] Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Old business, there is no counsel, old business. Item C, Executive Session, counsel would go into executive session for legal and contractual reasons on consideration of an economic development incentive grant. Item B, consideration of a proposal from East Cooper Land Trust to purchase property. And two would be a personnel matter, and then post-executive session, counsel may take action on any item listed on an executive session agenda, or discussed in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. Is there a motion that we enter into executive session?
I make a motion.
So moved by Mr. Santos.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Lanning. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's okay if you don't want to do this, but the East Cooper Land Trust was asked to come to present to us a plan, and would it be fair if they were able to talk to us about the details of this before we went back?
Oh, before we go back.
Before we went back. I think having the information before we talk about it might make the discussion back there a little bit better, if that's okay.
I'm looking at Mr. Paglirini. I think one question is, it is about the possible purchase of property that we would not want public.
That's correct.
So...
Further, it's not on the agenda for public comment.
It's not on the agenda for public comment. So that's not something we can do.
She could join us in executive session, however, right? Couldn't they join us in executive session to present details?
Not advised.
Not advised, and thank you.
Mayor, they had signed up with the expectation that they would be able to speak. I mean, they're on the, you know, we did not, meaning, me as staff or no one else on staff had indicated to them that they would not, after all, be entitled to speak prior to the item.
It's not on there as a public agenda item.
Someone can make a public comment, if you wish, if the chair wishes, a public comment is allowable. I think the second issue is, the very purpose of executive session is to discuss the possible purchase of property. If counsel wishes, and it's counsel's vote, to disclose that information to the public, that's counsel's wish. I'm just saying that that's not how we have it.
Mr. Paglirini? I think, I'm going to comment here, it is highly inadvisable for us in public session to be talking about someone else's property that is on the market and for sale, and we're out here in public talking about possibly buying it, or others, and we've identified it to all the public. I don't see that that's very prudent at all, and it's not on here as a public item.
I think we should write a letter to the Attorney General and ask them what they... I'm sorry.
I'd like to...
Let me, may I ask this question to Mr. Paglirini? If we go into executive session, and we are discussing, and we have something in writing, if we had a question, knowing that their representative is here, can we send word that we have a question that will help us in our deliberation? Or is that not advisable, either?
Yeah, yes, sir. I mean, I think we can. I think the better way, the most appropriate way, is to discuss it, and if there is a wish for counsel to move forward, that's a public vote, and staff can be tasked with answering, or finding answers to all of your questions. Because at this point, there's no action, there's no contract, there's no vote to move forward, and I think those would all be pre-contractual matters.
Right. Does that make sense, Mr. O'Rourke?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. No problem. All right, so we have a motion to go into executive session for the reasons listed, legal and contractual, personnel, and then we have read the notice for post-executive session. All in favor of going into executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We go into the mobile command post. We are in executive session. All right, we are reconvened from executive session, no votes were taken. Are there any motions to result of deliberations that occurred while in executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I move that...
And you have the floor.
Thank you. I move that we ask staff to proceed with the economic development incentive package that we discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, is there a second? And we have a second.
Who is the second on that?
Lanning.
Thank you.
We have a motion to, let me restate that, to direct staff to proceed in accordance with the deliberations that occurred on the economic development incentive. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted unanimously. Any other motions?
We didn't have anything back there? On one or...
HR.
Okay. Yes, I have a motion to uphold the decision by the administrator in regard to the personnel matter we discussed.
We have a motion to uphold the decision by the administrator.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Brimmer, in the personnel matter that was discussed. Any discussion by counsel? We prepared to vote on the measure. Hold on, just a second. We prepared to vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted unanimously. Are there any other motions to come out of executive session? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We are adjourned.
I know, but I just wanted somebody...